On April 14th, an unlawful entry into motor vehicle out on Aztec Loop, where someone identified a suspect on his Ring camera, a male with a backpack. Subject had gotten into his vehicle but didn't take any property. About three minutes later, another homeowner on Anthony Lane identified a male subject coming up his driveway looking into his vehicle with a backpack and a mask on. The subject, the property owner, came out and detained that guy. And through the course of him detaining him, the guy got away. He got in his vehicle and chased after the guy. And ultimately OSP Albany and our office stopped this suspect in a, I think it was a Jeep Patriot. And he was identified as Casey Murphy. He had all the kinds of equipment in there that he was casing vehicles and stuff. They could only cite him for the criminal trespass at that time and they released him. But he was connected, we think, to the first incident on Aztec Loop. This subject lived in Portland. A third incident on April 26th, where Deputy Bolton caught an adult female going through mailboxes as well as stealing packages off of front porches. She was contacted, she fought and tried to run. And ultimately was arrested for theft in the third degree, trespass in the second degree. And her name, I think it was in the actual report, it was Jessica McLaughlin. We're still getting some of these unlawful entries in the motor vehicles. Janelle and I had been talking about it earlier a couple of days ago. Deputy Woods has taken a couple of the calls. And we're still working on them. We're still gonna, we're gonna put this on focus patrol again in watching the residential areas as well as some of the new developments.
Okay.
And there was an incident today, earlier today, where Deputy Woods and Deputy Lyman recovered a stolen and arrested a guy out of that recovered stolen at Loves Truck Stop. And that individual was out of Salem.
Okay. Any questions for Scott and Colin?
Yeah, just curious, I don't know if you can tell us, but the person on Anthony Lane who detained the guy, do we know who that was, out of curiosity?
The subject that detained him?
Yeah, yeah.
It was, it was a homeowner on Anthony Lane. I don't know that I can release his name.
No, okay, I'll find out. I actually live on that street, so that's why I was wondering. I hadn't, I hadn't heard that story yet, so. I heard about some cars that broke into there, though.
You know what, I can find out if I can, and I certainly can release that back to Kevin or Janelle and let you know.
Oh, it's, it's fine, I'll just ask. So I have a, I have a good clue of it, so.
Anyway, yeah, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, we have a stater on that street, and we've got a retired sheriff on that, on that street also, so.
Well, you're real, you're hot. Other than that, we're gonna continue. I talked to Jacob Woods today, have been for the last couple of days. And we will do some extra patrols, especially at night. Our times that the events happen are at night, around from 10 o'clock until four or five in the morning. So we'll put it on focus patrol.
Good, good. Anything else, Greg?
No, that's, that looks like it's it. I knew, I do know, I was looking back at March. And we're about consistent to traffic citations to warnings. March was eight and 15, and we're at eight and 11 in April. Calls of service, complaints and stuff are about 127 in March and 129 in April.
Mayor.
All right, sir, thanks for your help.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Greg.
Greg, before you go, real quick.
Yes, Kevin, yes.
Mayor, one thing, we received a email, I received an email earlier today from Sheriff's Office from Captain Shell. It's a little like her last name.
Duncan, yes.
Captain Duncan, on enforcement, traffic enforcement. And they're looking at, trying to get back to a normal trend, but one of the things that they're gonna be encountering is the capability of justice court, because they're not seeing those right now. So just, just be aware that that is a challenge right now with court systems and how that's gonna work out. So they're following up on those, on that to see what the status is gonna be on those. Just wanted to mention that. We just got that from her this, this morning.
Okay, yeah. They're gonna be backed up for quite some time, trying to figure out how they're gonna get all started again, once again, circuit, justice court, and of course even some of our muni courts.
Muni Court, Albany Muni Court, we're going full steam ahead.
Forrest, are you going full steam ahead?
We are, we, I said get out there and cite whatever's out there. We're gonna be, starting June 8th, we're gonna be working, five days a week, holding court from 8:30 until 5:00 PM, until we get through this slug. But I told them to go ahead and issue the citations.
Good, good, good.
Pass that up, pass that out to Lynn County, come through City of Albany, we'll take them all.
There you go, okay. All right, we'll get the word out, Forrest.
Okay, dude.
Thank you.
Bye.
See ya. Okay, good night.
Okay, I see, I think a new phone number on the participation list, this is a type for public comment. So if there is anybody out there from public, good time to speak up now if you have a question. I'm saying that because the 8576 number popped in, no, I don't know if that belongs to anybody we know. Okay, hearing nothing, move on to council member staff comments. First one is under my name for reported resolution litigation. We talked about this in a different meeting. I want to ask Forrest to go ahead and just do a recap on the, on the Sam Gola case and the financials surrounding that, out of which I believe we need to seek a motion to pay for our portion of the financial fees, or the legal fees. So Forrest, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. So the Sam Gola case is now been resolved. We recall just briefly that involved allegations of inappropriate termination by our city based upon racial profiling against him. And, and that matter was filed in federal district court down in Eugene. It was eventually dismissed, and so, and it was dismissed, the city ended up not needing even to pay a dime. There was no negligence or liability found on behalf of the city. Matter was dismissed and cannot be brought back up again. But as a result of that, though, we've had insurance coverage through CIS. And the initial insurance is requiring us to pay up to $10,000, that's the limit on it, but it's 10% of the cost of the defense that the insurance company had to hire out. They ended up hiring people who specialize in defending cities in federal court. And that total bill for them was $89,441. And so we end up, percent of our policy, end up owing $8,900 approximately as a result of that. If, as long as we pay that $8,900 within 30 days, that matter is reduced. And so that matter would be reduced down to $8,675.84. There's also another requirement of paying $15,000 back to our insurance company. And so what the city is, or what management, Kevin is actually looking for authorization for you folks to pay the final invoice to CIS, which is, oh, I believe, Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, $23,675.84. And as long as that amount is authorized, Kevin will get that paid, and then we could put all of those voluminous files that we have regarding that case behind us and put that away. Happy to answer any questions you folks may have regarding this matter.
Questions from council?
Oh, I'll make a motion that we move forward in authorization of our city manager to pay $23,675.84 to CIS to resolve this matter.
Second. A motion from Scott and a second from about three people, so I would say, I think John Sullivan as well. So Kim, would you please read back the motion?
Still writing it down.
That's it.
Motion to authorize the city manager to, I believe it was to pay $23,675 to CIS to resolve.
$25 and, I'm sorry, and 84 cents.
And 84 cents, thank you, to resolve this matter, is what I heard, is that right?
To, well, it should be, yes, to pay the invoice to CIS.
To pay the invoice to CIS, to.
Josh Cowan, you okay with that?
Yep.
Yes, I am.
Any further discussion?
Um, I, who did we say was second? I heard John first?
John Sullivan.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Okay, so those in favor, please indicate with the, we just vote your position with the yes and no indicators on the motion. Missing one vote. Now I got missing two votes.
You got all of them.
I was gonna say, I thought I saw them all, yes.
I only see three.
You have to scroll down, that's what I forgot to do last time.
Or expand your window, what I did.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'll learn how to do this, yeah. Okay, good enough, thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you for your help. Second under council member and staff comments is item by Scott McPhee on donation request discussion. So Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring this up from our budget committee meeting. I think we all probably remember talking about it there. Now that we, this past year, we adopted this, our sponsorship and donation guidance. Obviously in the budget, we have a couple items coming up that is part of that funding that would fall under this. So just kind of get feedback from council too, because to me, this kind of should have been brought up at budget committee, especially since we had the organizations there, so they could have answered any questions for us if we, if we had them. I don't think at this point for this year, though, we need to really worry too much about Art and Air Festival or the fair, because they're not gonna be happening, so. And if anybody has any other ideas on that, it's fine, but I mean, obviously, they're, they're, they're not gonna have those. So that was, that was, that was kind of my thoughts. I'd like to hear everybody else's feedback on that. I mean, is this something that should be brought up at budget committee? Should we bring this up at council? Should we wait until budget for next month to kind of bring this up?
So I'll jump in a little bit. I guess I, I was hearing your, your request at the budget meeting, Scott. And I guess I, I, I didn't take note of making a, I guess, much of a, an argument towards, you know, going through that process, being that these are funds that we've allocated in the past to same, same agencies or, you know, you know, groups. So I guess if something new came up, I think we would wanna, you know, vet that and go through that process. But I guess that's where my head was, was that it was something that we've done already, and sort of, I feel like we've vetted that pretty well already in the past. But that, that's where I was on it. So that's my, my comment.
Okay. All right, anyone else? John, what, John, what's your thoughts on this? We haven't, you weren't obviously here when we did this, so.
Me?
Yeah, what do you think?
You know, I, of course, I'm new at this, but, you know, I was, if we have donated to these associations in the past, or, you know, places in the past, I think, you know, all of them were legitimate. I didn't see any unreasonable requests. I agree with you, we probably need to, you know, take the Art and Festival and the other money off there and return it to the fund. So, you know, once again, I'm new at this, so this is the first time through the process. I wasn't opposed to donating to any of them that requested. I was a little shocked at one of the amounts, but other than that, I agree with Councilor Cowan.
Okay, all right. As I said, I think, go ahead.
If I could jump in, Scott, real quick, with, just back to, I think that is a good point that, I didn't necessarily take into consideration the new council members or people that you haven't sort of gone through that process, so, you know, maybe it is probably, even though, you know, we have, but John hasn't, so probably something to take note of, just to go through that, so it's sort of aired. I think that's, you know, now thinking it a little bit more through might, might make some sense, just to be, be going through that process, so.
Yeah, and kind of going back to that is, I think one of the major reasons that we put this out was because we always get questioned why we donate, donate money to these organizations. Not to say they're not great organizations, they are, all of them. But it was more to, we had an answer to people when they ask us, why do you donate $5,000 to Boys and Girls Club? Or why do you donate 10, $10,000? You know, it used to be 10, we cut it back to five last year to them. But why do we, why do we donate that? And we've, we've never been able to answer that. And I think that was one of the, I know I always got questioned on that, and I never had an, had an answer. And so, and that was one of the reasons, I think, we kind of put this guidance, guidance out there. My belief is that we should go through these with these. Now, we may find at the end that we still, we're gonna donate money, but really, you know, it at least gives us that answer. We have the answer of why we donate to them, what we give for that, give for that money, you know, why it's 5,000, not 10, or why it's 2,500, whatever the amount is, what we actually get for that, for that money. And one of the big questions is, and I can have Forrest time in on this, I know we went around and around on it, is that whether or not a city can actually donate. So a city can use funds to buy services, can a city actually donate? And that's, that, that becomes questionable. So, and that was, that was part of that too, was to keep us out of, out of any, any questionable things there. Like, like for instance, for instance, Boys and Girls Club, one of the items that they brought up was, you know, and we're supposed to pick which, which one we want to use, but one of the $2,500, part of that was to sponsor, to get our name up, at LBCC for a hoop jam for a weekend. Now, I personally, not sure how we can constitute that. How do we spend $2,500 of Millersburg City taxpayer funds on a hoop jam at LBCC? Not sure. So, so that's kind of what part of this guidance, guidance was, was to walk us, walk us through that so we can answer those, those questions. Because I would have a hard time, hard time spending that, so, to, to sponsor that. So that was, that was kind of part of it. And I'll be honest, I kind of went through, because as everybody knew, I was asking them a lot of questions, because I thought we were gonna go, gonna go through this. And in all reality, a lot of those organizations, I think, if we rewarded the donation sponsorship, buying of services that we do to them, I think personally, the Boys and Girls Club, Meals on Wheels, ABC House, we could easily justify that. Now, could we justify it as a, hey, we're just gonna donate money and do whatever that you want with it? I don't see how, how, how we can do that, because again, we can't really, it's questionable whether we can actually donate. But can we give that money to them to provide a service for us? Absolutely. So, and it's just going through this to be able to do that, and so.
Scott, so. Go ahead, go ahead, Dave.
Well, I want to just throw my two cents in here. I, I agree with, as far as budget, when it came down to budget, I agreed with who we were willing to donate to. I'm not gonna lie and say that I was disappointed that as much time as we spent on this donation sponsorship guidance that we, it was never even brought up. So I, that part, to me, you still gotta, you know, this is a new document, this is something that we spent a lot of, I remember a lot of time talking about, but it was never brought up during the budget committee at all, when it came to deciding how much we were gonna donate to these individual institutions. So that was a little disappointing, because to me, it's either we come up with a guidance, and then we go through it, and it's applicable to everybody, or we just don't do it.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of where I'm at. I mean, just to kind of run it out, obviously, I'm not going through this whole guidance, but some of the questions that I was asking was like ABC House, I mean, they said that they, last year, they roughly took care of two to three kids from our, from our city. And obviously saves money from the sheriff's fund, from our policing force, which we would have to spend more there. And their average, average cost per person was $2,900. So really, if we donate to them, donate, buy a service, we're paying them to provide that service, you know, we're, we could easily justify five, five grand. I mean, that's, that's the way that I see it, and that's just real, real quick reading, reading through it. Boys, Boys and Girls Clubs is easy. So, so, I mean, the only problem with them is they are a club, but considering the fact that we also provide money to pay for club memberships, we could probably get by with that too. So, so I guess that was, that was kind of where my head, head was, and where I was, you know, asking all those, all those questions. So then we can ask, so then somebody asked us, hey, why do you donate 5,000 to ABC House? Well, we do, because they provide the service that otherwise would cost our policing force more money, we'd have to pay more money there. So instead of paying it there, we're paying it here, they're more set up for the service. And oh, by the way, they took care of two to three of our kids at an average cost of $2,900. So we're not even, we're not even giving them enough money to pay for the kids that they take, take, take care of within our city. I could, I can justify that all day, all day long. I can't justify, we just, we just send them five grand, I don't, I don't know. They get it, they do whatever with it, so. I don't know if that makes sense. So same with the Boys and Girls Club, I cannot do, I cannot swallow the LBCC hoop, hoop jam and we get our name up on a billboard. That doesn't really seem like something a city would do, so.
That hoop jam was sponsored by Boys and Girls Club though, correct?
No, no, they want, they're, one of the things that we have for us to sponsor is, because we had to pick, it was four, $2,500 each, total of 10 they were asking for. And one of those fours was the LBCC hoop, hoop, hoop jam. We haven't said which, we didn't even talk about that in the budget, which one we're even, we're even sponsoring, so.
Right. I guess that's why I figured we would as a council decide that, but I guess what, I guess what I would like to know from, you know, moving forward would be, you know, do we, regardless, like, like I started, I said, well, you know, I, we've donated to these groups before, I felt comfortable with the amounts. I sort of, in my mind, I, before even the budget meeting, you know, read through the checklist that was provided, you know, that we worked on the guidance. It sort of felt like, okay, we're, we're likely going to, unless something new came up, you know, we're, we're in line with, with the guidance, in my mind. Now, I know that might be different for you, and that's why we have that, that's why we have a group, a committee. And it does, I guess, moving forward, and I think it's, it's probably good at the budget, is to run through it, probably at the budget committee, I guess, is looking at it. And, you know, a little bit bad on me, I, I sort of already had done it and felt like, okay, I felt comfortable with it, we've given to that. But I didn't take into consideration, as I said earlier, anyone new. You know, we didn't have anyone from the public, but if we did have public. And then to answer your question, Scott, I think, which would be good is, three months from now, when it's not fresh on our mind, hey, why, why was there, you know, the, whatever the amount we gave to Boys and Girls or the Art and Air, or whatever is, is given. And then we could have the checklist that we could go back to and say, well, it hit these points, and maybe even making a note that we're directing that towards, you know, no, not the LBCC deal, but, you know, towards a hoop jam that's in Millersburg, or something at, actually at the club in Albany, where we already know that, you know, 30% of our kids that are going there. And so clearly there's a, you know, benefit to our, our, our city with that. So, I mean, I'd be good with that, and probably, we should, should probably just make that decision now, so that next year, it's not, not a question, it's just, you know, it's like, well, when are we gonna do that? We just, we do it, you know? Is, I'm good with that. Unless the council thinks we should bring it up at council, but it seems like the appropriate place would be, you know, probably going through the checklist officially at the budget committee, especially with the additional members from our community that's part of the budget committee. I think that, that's just a more, a better vetting area in, in committee.
I like it.
Yeah, Scott, I think, I think it should definitely be in the budget committee meeting, and it should be, you know, provided with the materials and everybody kind of goes through it on their own.
Counselor?
Go ahead, Kevin.
So one of the things I just wanted to point out that we did, so the form that everyone filled out was a form that council developed that they wanted to see come back, that we, we shared with them at the time, and we told them that they would be reviewed based on the criteria that the council had selected. And we also sent an email out to each of you and the budget committee with a copy of the request for the donation for sponsorship guidance. We, we felt that that was what we would be doing at the meeting and on that. So that was sent out with an explanation of that to council and budget committee with the form that's showing now. So our form did go out, so both the form that they filled out, and then we sent the, the guidance for donation for the review of those. And that was our intent, is that that would be addressed during the budget committee and on that. So those were, were, were there on it. So I just want to make aware that if you feel that we need to, you need to have a rear, review it further, that's, that's fine, but the intent was that that was being taken into consideration when you're making your decisions. And we had shared that with each of the agencies, that they would be meeting these, and we sent this out to them previously when this was adopted, letting them know that that would be the new process in place as well. So just want to make you aware of that.
So to recap, what is it that you recommended we do during the budget hearing specifically? Is it, I missed something here, I think.
No, we, we were talking about going through that actual guidance sheet, and so we can answer those questions of why we're donating money, how we're donating money, so forth. But instead of waiting to do it here at council, we'll, we'll do it at the budget committee, when A, we have more people, more people from the public, and B, we have the, the organizations they're talking to. So it's a great, great, great time to be able to ask those questions, right? So obviously this year, I don't know if we need to reconvene the budget committee, I mean, I say we just go through it this year, but, but, you know, maybe in the future, we just bring that up, you know, so. And obviously, if we do it this year, we'll probably have a good guidance on it for next year when it comes to these, because it seems to be the same organizations, right, coming, coming back, so.
Scott, what is it, great discussion, what do you want out of this discussion right now, Scott? What are you looking for?
So, so my, my thought, I mean, we could go through them now, or we could wait, because I think we're gonna do budget next meeting, is, is that correct, Kevin?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so next, next week, we could, we could do it, do it then, but I say we go, we go through these. I don't think it'll take a whole lot of time, these, these are pretty straightforward in all reality, but, but again, at least we can answer those questions, we did get it on record, we talked about, we actually talked through this as a council, we're not just, we're not just sending, sending money out, so.
I, I would recommend if we are, that we invite them back, because I believe they all were under the impression that they were being reviewed under this criteria, and that they had been, had preliminary approval off of what the discussion took place, so. If council's comfortable with that, inviting the, those that are remaining that haven't canceled, back the opportunity to answer questions if you have further questions on that.
I, I kind of challenged the need to do this, given the discussions, the lengthy discussions we had, and the motion was, that actually I made, to approve them. What do we need to redo? We followed the process that the council, actually you, Scott, drafted with Forrest's help last year, we followed the process, the folks came in, gave their presentations, we had lengthy discussions, we made decisions. What else do we need to do?
Well, let me ask you this question. So you're, so you approved donating 5,000 to Boys and Girls Club, right?
Yep.
That was, that was one of the, one of the motions, or one of the donations. What type of services and programs are they, are they, are we getting for that?
Scott, I don't particularly need to get into that discussion, I know where your head's going, or I think I know what you, what you, you believe quite strongly in this. I don't necessarily agree we should be sponsoring a hoop basketball program, no. I think we should be sponsoring those programs that serve our kids, okay? And I thought with the parks, we're doing it, but I, we're beating this to death. We spent more time on this topic than anything, I don't, my personal view, I don't agree with giving every family in Millersburg $200.
Surprisingly, that, that didn't come up this year.
Let me finish. It came up last year, we had a, we had a discussion, I accept the fact that budget committee didn't want to go there, I'm fine. I dropped it, I'm okay. We're, we're spending way too much time on this particular issue. Forrest, I believe if we were treading in negative waters where we shouldn't be, he could be pulling our chain by now, I don't know that we need to beat this dead horse to death any further, this horse to death any further. You can nickel and dime what the money's going to within Boys and Girls Club, fact is, we have a lot of. Fact is, we have a lot of kids that participate in Boys and Girls Club. I, I don't know that we're, having another discussion on this one more time if the June meeting's going to buy us anything. My two bits worth.
All right, well, thanks for that. I disagree with that, because I, I think we still are not answering the exact questions that this was for. And that is, why are we donating, donating 5 grand? Why aren't we donating 10? What are we getting for those, for those services? I mean, we didn't even discuss at the Budget Committee with Boys and Girls Club when they brought up. We're only giving them five, five grand, they asked for 10. They gave us 10 worth of sponsorships. We didn't even discuss which ones they, they were doing. So the Hoop Jam's still on there. So I don't, I don't believe that discussion really happened. So I don't, I don't think that was very thorough, and it definitely didn't match to this guidance, so, that we, that we have.
Why didn't, why didn't we drill down on that point during the meeting when they were there?
I, I believe I asked that question a couple of different times. So the, the first meeting and the second. And I was asking questions to all of the different organizations so I could answer these.
And I thought you got the answer, so that's, that's, you know, I was taken back by, I must have missed that on what the board.
I, I believe the conversation at the second meeting at the end, when we voted for the budget, was that they were going to have the Council look at it, and that was between Mark Rom and Darren Lane, so.
What they said was, because you voted against the budget, what they said was, you can bring your issue back to us because the Council, the Budget Committee, will accept new you and, 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 yeah. One other member. Come on, Gort.
Can, can the mayor speak up? I'm having a really hard time hearing him.
Yeah, you're the only person that voted against it for this particular reason. I'm thinking a guy who lives on, who works on planning commissions on the Budget Committee, help me out here.
Dennis?
Sorry?
Dennis, Connor?
Dennis, Dennis voted against it, but he didn't vote, I called him, he did not vote against it relative to this issue whatsoever. So this was your issue, that, and the Budget Committee as a whole supported it, and you voted against it. And that's fine. In fact, I think it's healthy. I think the dialogue we're having is healthy, and it's great pushback, but we've had it three or four times now. You know, I didn't, enough's enough, I guess.
So I'll chime in here again. Me, as far as the budget being approved, I voted for it, just because, for the simple fact that Scott, you yourself said, we kind of all agree that money is being donated, donated is, is justifiable, whether you change wording or not, in my opinion. But I definitely would like to see, on the Budget Committee meeting, definitely going through exactly next year, going through exactly what, what the money's going to be used for, so you're not, you're not sponsoring some Hoop Jam. You know, you know what you're getting. I completely agree with that. I just think there's, it's great that it got sent out, but, yeah, no, no, there was, there's little to no mention of it when we were actually sitting there going through the budget. So to me, I, I think it does need to get broken down. I think that we're, we're good with the budget the way it is this year, because everybody agrees that the places that we're donating to and the amounts are justifiable. But I, I think we, we came, we spent hours talking about this document, which is great, but it didn't, it wasn't implemented the way I thought it would either. I, I just, that's my honest opinion.
So why don't we sit down with John, with Boys and Girls Club, and say, come back to us and tell us how you will spend 5,000 or whatever number less than that, specifically on those programs that will benefit Millersburg kids? Give them that, go back one more, get Kevin to do that, go back one more time. Give us, give us a, a menu of items that we will support that, that impact Millersburg kids directly, and we'll fund that. It's not too late to do that.
Scott, good with me. I, I, you know, as I said, I, I read the, I read the guide prior and sort of judged it towards the, towards the, what the, the requests were coming in at, and that's how I judged it, in a sense. I don't have a problem, you know, in the future, just checking, checking a couple of boxes and going through it again openly if we need to. But they, that's what I, I did. I guess, I think the only one, maybe, that question that I'm hearing is, is, is the Boys and Girls Club. So I think that's a fair shake to, to do that. I, I'm against inviting, I mean, they can come again, but I, I feel like that, that we've listened to them. We, we did have a vote, and it was, majority was to move forward to the council with it. There, there's no guarantees that it will pass that council necessarily, but that's just the process. If they, you know, I, I guess I feel pretty comfortable with what has been said and, and all that. Other than, other than the one, I think, is, is what we would decide with the Boys and Girls Club, which I believe, I don't have the notes in front of me, but I think they had like four options or something like that. And, and I figured that would be something we would drum out, you know, like, okay, what are we going to put it towards? And I agree, the LBCCs, that was sort of a stretch, for sure. I like the idea that they were going to try to do, you know, do something out here in Millersburg, they just didn't follow, you know, through, whatever.
Well, and we really don't know, but, I mean, I agree with the LBCC thing is a stretch, but we may have 20% of our kids competing in Hoop Jam at LBCC. So that's kind of a tough one, too. And Scott, I do agree with some of your concerns. I'd, I'd like to see it more of a checkbox, and if they meet this criteria, it's more black and white for, for me, and, and like you say, to explain it to the constituents out there.
That's what I think. I don't, I don't think personally, with the information that I have from them, I don't think we need to bring them back, because I don't see, especially if we take the fair out and our Air Fest Festival, to be honest. So, because they're not going to happen. These other ones, I think we could easily justify. I do say that we go through it. I mean, it sounds like Boys and Girls Club would do either, either way. I kind of already did mine for, I didn't go through each question, but I already did for what I thought for the ABC House. But, you know, so I, I don't think bringing them back's needed, at least for, for me. But I'd just like to see the discussion happen so we, so we have those answers. And obviously, it needs to be somewhat in some sort of, you know, a, a public way that we do that, so people know what we've, what we've done and why we've, why we've, why we've done it, you know? It can't just necessarily be in the back of our heads, so. That's kind of my thought. So I say we, I mean, my, my, my thought is, is next for Budget Committee, anybody can think about it or look it over. We just discuss it before we approve the budget of who we're donating to, and, and why, obviously, we need to clean up the Boys and Girls Club either, either way. My suggestion to that is kind of the same thing we've done before, and that is to try to have them, what we've done before in the past was we, we asked them to bring sports to Millersburg Park. They lost JBO, or they got, they traded, changed JBO, so they're no longer doing that. But I, I would say we would do that for the five, the 5,000. Also, they were going to do events in the park for us during this, during the summer for kids. I would, I would say that we direct the money towards, towards that. Now, it doesn't mean it has to just be spent on that, it's just, this is what we, this is why we're donating this, this is what, what we'd like you to, you know, do for it. So, and, and they were already planning on, on doing that, so.
So what's the, so the rest of council support that approach?
Yeah, I'm good with that. Yeah, it'd be, you know, it might, yeah, yeah. I think going through it, check, I sort of like if there was a checkbox, maybe the help guide, just something that we can quickly just like, yep, check, check, check. The guide works, I mean, it, it is sort of like a checkbox, so, yeah. Let's do it.
Everyone, have you thought through, Kevin, on the present, presentation of budget in preparation for a vote? Do you foresee a special process for that, other than just opening up for council discussion and community discussion, where we would fit this piece into that? Any thoughts around that?
Normally, we would just do, just open it for consideration for council for approval. It's usually fairly short. If you want to add something, and Forrest can jump in here, or I think Jake may be on the call, too. If we have something that you want to specifically review, we could call that portion out, out on it, or that. And I'm, I'm assuming everyone did review the forms, because that was based on council input on what you wanted to see, the types of questions. So if there's something additional that wasn't covered that on that, or you need those again, we can make sure you have that. And then, like I said, this was what you said you wanted to use for your decision factors that was sent previously, and we can put that in the packet as well, if you want to have that discussion.
This would be a budget hearing as well, right?
It'll be the budget hearing, yes, for the adoption of the budget.
Okay. Are we satisfied, we're done with that one?
Yeah, no, that sounds great. So we'll go through it next meeting real, real quick, and then, obviously, Budget Committee, from this point forward, we'll ask them to go, go, go through it, through it there.
One more time, Scott, do we want then go back to ABC, to the Boys and Girls Club and ask them to lay out a menu for Millersburg specifically?
No, because for, for, for me personally, I, I think I could do that. That's me personally. If anybody else feels that they have additional questions, then obviously that should, that should probably happen. But I, I personally feel that I had the questions answered to the point where I could definitely justify the amount that we're, that we're getting, so.
So just, just to clarify, are you only wanting to review the Boys and Girls Club? Or you wanting to review Meals and Wheels and ABC both?
I, I say we do all, do all three, because if we're going to go through the checklist, we should do it for all of them. That way, we can answer the, answer the questions. But again, even for those three, I ask the questions that, for me.
So if you would like, we could take, if you would like, before that meeting, we can take your decision criteria here and just put it in a check, you know, do a, a box and send those three applications back out to you again, if you want to fill that out ahead of time, too, for that.
I mean, you can even fill it in as a group as you go through, so you have your documentation at the end of the meeting that says, here's how they met the criteria.
I like that, that's perfect.
So we will.
Are we talking about?
We'll put that together.
So we're, we're talking about doing that at, at our next, at the, at this upcoming budget meeting.
At, at the June council meeting. So what we'll do before then, we'll send out the decision criteria that's on, we'll put it in a format that you can use to, to score. And so you can have it, and we'll send the application back out to you again for review. And then we can, if you want, you can go through each one of those and just kind of say where you're at, and we can collate it into one document.
Okay.
Perfect, all right. Thank you, guys. That's all.
Okay, then, we can move on. Next item in the agenda would be the project updates, Kevin and Janelle.
Actually, we, before we get to the project update, we're going to do a COVID update with council. So as some of you may be aware, the governor last week presented a plan for reopening Oregon, and I just want to go through some of that and discuss a little bit with you on it. So the first thing we'll do is, there's a PowerPoint that kind of overviews it, so we'll just walk through that real quickly. Janelle's going to open it up here. We're, it's, it's thinking.
This is under staff comments, and Kevin and I discussed this earlier, and I forgot about it.
So this is what was released on Thursday of last week. So details on restarting public life and business. So go ahead and scroll down to, so the first one is the goals for reopening. You've probably heard some, you may have heard some of this before, minimize hospitalizations and deaths, allow people to safely return from work so they can support themselves and families, minimize risks to frontline workers, avoid overwhelming our health systems, protect those at highest risk of severe illness, especially communities of color, support for local gatherings to preserve community cohesion and, and cultural practices. They want it to, living with the virus and those reliable treatment for prevention, which is many months off. So physical distancing and hygiene is one of the big things. Every restriction lifts, lifted increases transmission and will increase cases is our concern on it. So some actions that they want to do is make sure that vulnerable populations stay at home. Primarily, those are high risk, have the high risk factors and over 60, 65. Limit visitation still to nursing homes, hospitals, limited gatherings, limited travel. Again, the clean, sanitizing hygiene, stay home when you're sick, elder work when possible. Next slide. Some new updated actions that they're looking is widespread testing protocols, contract, contact tracing and isolation, face coverings when in public, and use of PPE when in close quarters. March 1st, require employees in certain businesses where physical distancing cannot be maintained to wear a cloth mask or other material. And you can see there, strongly recommended business where employees are required to wear face coveries, establish mandatory face cover policy for customers as well. Strongly recommend that mask or cloth material covers the nose and mouth be worn in any indoor public space, especially where six feet of distance cannot be maintained. So the phases, so the first one they're looking at are current with some updates. Phase one, some counties can enter May 15th. Lynn County has put a plan in two for approval. They're waiting to hear back from that to open up the phase one. Phase two will be higher risk activities than phase three. The highest risk activities will require reliable treatment or vaccine. So some current updates and dates. May 1st, non-emergency procedures, medical clinics, dental clinics were able to start at 50% as long as they have PPE. That's personal protective equipment, masks, gloves, gowns, et cetera. Recreation where physical distancing measures can be followed, some state park day use areas, boat ramps, option for county federal campgrounds. And then May 15th, standalone retail that was previously closed but can follow OSHA guidelines, furniture stores, art galleries, jewelry shops, some boutiques. Childcare, summer school camps, which I thought was interesting, they're looking at, so. And youth programs with limitations and specific guidelines. So we're waiting to hear them back, because we've had some requests on, you know, would baseball be included in that potentially? And we've had discussions with county health, but we're waiting to hear back on that. Kind of depends on what the county's allowing or not allowing. Next slide. So prerequisites, you have to have declining COVID-19 prevalence, hospitalizations made urgent by county, declining for 14 days, emergency department visits for COVID-like illnesses below, influenza-like illness baseline measured statewide. Haven't seen the local for hospitals, we'll talk a bit more about that in a minute, we'll show a slide, but I believe looking at hospitalizations, we look statewide has, is continuing to drop. So minimum testing regimen, 30 tests per thousand population per week, accessible testing for underserved communities. And the contact tracing system, they want to have tracing where it's, for some of it's exposed, go back and identify those. Isolation quarantine facilities for those that don't have the ability to do it in their home. Statewide sector guidelines, sufficient healthcare capacity, so 20% hospital bed search capacity has to be maintained. And then a sufficient supply of PPE. Three days required, 14 days for small and rural hospitals. And then sufficient PPE for first responders in your county. So the, done by county, the declining COVID-19 prevalence is by county. Minimum testing regimen is by a health region, and you'll see in the slide coming up where we're talking, we'll talk about that. Contact tracing countywide, isolation facilities, again, it's on the county. Finalized statewide sector guidelines, sufficient healthcare capacity, health region, and then sufficient. So these are the regions, so Lynn County is in region two here, as you can see, the, the light blue area. So it's primarily Lynn, Benton, Marion, Lincoln, I think that is current. Polk County, yeah, some Polk is in it as well. So phase one, on the 15th, so childcare, current is for essential workers only, cohorts up to 10. It would be open to all with priority for essential workers, increased cohorts, numbers to be defined. The new statewide summer school will be open with physical distancing, outdoor recreation, state park day use, as we talked about earlier. Restaurants currently is takeout only, new statewide takeout, but they are looking at phase one by county, sit down with six-foot distancing requirements. Barber shops, yay, and personal care facilities are closed, but phase one, they will allow physical distancing, distancing appointments, PPE, and customer list is required, so they want to track who has been in there in case there is an exposure. Same with personal care fitness gyms, so max limit of distancing sanitation required. Local gatherings tenancy for local groups only up to 25 with no travel. And also specific things for restaurants and bars, ensure tables are at least six feet apart, including when customers approach or leave, our employees face mask and on-site consumption by 10. Personal services, we don't need to go into, we're not going to go into, you can look at this later. This is available on our website, there's a link to it under reopening. Uh, personal services, we don't need to go into them, we're not gonna go into it, you can look at this later. This is available on our website, there's a link to it under reopening. Um, we have a link to this if you want to take a look at. So metrics for consideration for reimposing restrictions, so inability to meet contact tracing requirements. We have to meet, uh, maintain ninety-four, five percent of contacts within twenty-four hours. Uh, more than thirty percent of cases cannot be traced to existing cases, so those can be things where we could see re-instrict, restrictions reimposed. Evidence of increasing prevalence of COVID nineteen, uh, measured by a five percent or greater increase in incidents over seven days. Um, measured by uptrading percent of positivity, COVID nineteen testing over seven days. One of the things that they really haven't, and I haven't been able to hear an answer on yet, is they added last Monday, they started counting presumptive cases as well. So I'm hoping that when they're looking at their increases, that it's based on a percentage, because if not. Um, just the fact that we're doing more testing, you could see number of cases increasing greater than five percent. So I'm, I'm hoping it's based on a percentage basis rather than just that, because otherwise you're gonna be skewing that as, potentially as a higher testing rate goes, comes into play. I have some increase in burden on severe COVID nineteen, um, on there. And then phase two, after twenty-one days after phase one, um, they can look at beginning, um, entering phase two, but they don't have the phase two criteria out yet. So that part of the framework has not been written. So the goal is to further expand that and then, um, phase three. So this is most likely our event also will be not moving forward, because you can see phase three, concert conventions, festivals, live audience. Of course, won't be possible with a reliable treatment or preventable, prevention is available, is unknown until one O D. So the state's saying therefore all gathering should be canceled for significantly modified through at least September. And then they'll be providing further guidance as we move into the summer. So this is just kind of a, the final slide here, um, what's eligible to be open current. Uh, new statewide changes, uh, expanded childcare education programs, more public spaces. Uh, phase ones, you can see restaurant bars reopen with limited sit-down, uh, hair salons, gyms, impersonal gatherings, um, on their optional increase. We did receive, uh, an email yesterday, um, talking about that they may be looking at opening all retail. Um, I believe that's for counties that are phase one, um, and there's, um, some limitations in there. Um, so, you know, all of your, uh, including malls and things, but there's things that they would have to do. Um, on, I think that those may be allowed to reopen on the fifteenth. So I haven't seen anything further on that. It was just, um, in an email that we got, uh, yesterday, received yesterday on that. So what I wanted to go into, um, so that kind of gives you an overview, I just want to hit some of the things that, uh, are taking place that they're recommending and, um, what we have done to this point and, uh, on that. So the first portion is face coverings here. Yeah, so if you can pull up face coverings now. So all of these are on our website, um, again, they, uh, hopefully are on there, um, Kim was working on getting them posted for us.
They are.
So, okay, so one of the things, um, so face coverings. Uh, one of the things we need to just be aware of, they don't that change, the need to, uh, limit social and recreation activities, uh, where people can't stay six feet apart, they still need to do that. Um, stay at least six feet from others during necessary trips to grocery stores, pharmacies, or healthcare. Cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue and throw it away right after a cough or sneeze into your sleep. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, or mouth or face. Clean your hands regularly, soap and water, alcohol-based sanitizer, and if you're sick, isolate yourselves. Stay away from work, family and friends. Be so until twenty-four hours, both fever and cough have gone away without the use of fever-reducing medicine. So they're recommending, um, that the public wear, um, face masks to, to avoid that. So then, um, if we go to the, the next one, is just a general reopening guidance for the public. So this is for, uh, things that we need to do is public life and business maintaining as the state reopens. So again, um, they're really hitting, if you're sick, stay home. Avoid exposure to COVID nineteen, people are at risk for complications over six year underlying medical conditions, stay home and if you feel well. If you become symptomatic, uh, cough, fever, shortness of breath, they've actually added, I'm surprised they didn't include, there's actually been, I believe, six additional symptoms added. It's on the CDC's website and there's also a link on Oregon Health Associate, what, Health Authorities page. Uh, while in public, return home and self, uh, immediately self-isolate, contact your healthcare provider if you need medical attention. Again, good hygiene, um, washing for twenty seconds, hand sanitizer. Cover coughs and sneezes, avoid touching your face, and practicing physical distancing. Now they, again, talk about using cloth, paper, disposable face coverings in public. Um, they're not requiring it at this point for the general public, but it's highly recommended. Stay close to home, again, um, on there. So that's the, the public. The next one is employers. And share a little bit with you on this and then we will, I'll share a little bit more on a proposed, uh, policy that want to go over with you tonight. So, um, apply with the, our current executive orders in place, know the signs of symptoms of COVID nineteen and what to do if employee develops symptoms at the workplace. Understand how it is transmitted from one person to another, maybe mainly through coughing, sneezing, talking, touching, or via objects touched by someone with the virus. Making, uh, public health safety a priority and implementing safeguards to protect employees in the public. Uh, looking at federal state guidelines, Queen Sector specific guidance. Um, OSHA's put some guidance out, um, some things that we've had, I've had some discussions with the mayor and made him aware of some things, and we'll talk more about that here in a few minutes. Uh, beware of protected leave requirements and planning ahead for anticipated workforce adjustments, um, on there. The, uh, go ahead and go to the next page there. Identify positions for telework, which we have done, uh, or parts for telework, including consideration, uh, stagger, rotate work schedules. So workplace, some of the things they wanted to look at is implementing, uh, physical distancing measures considering with executive order and state guidance. Increase physical space between workers, this may include modifications, this markings on the floor. Demonstrating appropriate spacing, installing plexiglass shields for other barriers to block airborne particles and maintain distances, review any other sector-specific guidance with state recommends or requires specific distancing measures. Uh, restrict use of shared items that require disinfection or equipment between uses. Reinforce a meticulous hand wash, hygiene and frequent hand washing is important. Having sanitizer throughout our building, require disinfecting common, they touch workstation keyboards, telephones, as well as high-traffic people perform environmental cleaning. Uh, encourage employees to require use of, uh, cloth disposable, cloth or disposable coverings as indicated by sector-specific guidelines. Consider upgrades to facilities may reduce exposure to coronavirus such as no-touch faucets, sand dryers. Uh, increase in our ventilation and filtration or disinfection of recycled air. Touchless methods, page three, uh, limit the number of employees gathering in shared spaces, restrict use of shared spaces such as conference rooms and break rooms. Uh, restrict non-essential meetings, conduct meetings virtually as much as possible if impersonal meetings are necessary. Again, follow physical distancing requirements and regular hea- health checks. Taking temperature, respiratory symptom screening or symptom, uh, reporting employees of job-related consistent with business assessing. Train all employees and safety requirements and expectations at physical work sites. Um, let's go to the next document. That's the primary things, just wanted to make you aware about it there. So one of the things that they have, even though we don't necessarily fall in retail, but there's some things that we probably need to be aware of as we look at reopening our front office area. Um, retail stores are gonna be required to limit the number of customers in the store and focus on maintaining at least six feet of distance between people and employees in the store. Uh, with that, so one of the things we're looking at is to be able to maintain six feet spacing if we were to open up the lobby. Maximum we could have in our lobby area at any one time is really gonna only be three people and we're gonna probably have to identify where we would want them. So we would need to have some, some things on that. Um, post-clear signs, symptoms asking pay, uh, employees and customers with symptoms to stay home and listening to who to contact if needed assistance. So we're, we're working on those things right now. Decisions to encourage, uh, social distancing, uh, cleaning, frequent cleaning, as you can see. We did update, uh, we have, uh, stuff here for, for cleaning as well as we increased our cleaning frequency here at city hall by, um, company doing our sanitation. So again, require all employees to wear, uh, cloth, paper, disposable face coverings, business must provide cloth, paper, or disposable face coverings for its employees. And then they also have, to the extent possible, create all customers to wear cloth, paper, disposable covering. Uh, certain placing, clear or plastic barriers or glass barriers in front of guest chairs or others. Uh, look at one-way flow, which we have been discussing here, how we would handle that, coming in and then leaving. So we don't have people going out the same, meeting and, and trying to go through the same door that someone else is coming in. Um, and then signage for that. So that's one of the things. Then the last one is some additional updates that they've done on recreation, I'm gonna let Janelle just, that's basically, uh, post. Even though our park has been open, some things that they've talked about that we probably need to look at doing in the park that we've been discussing, so.
Yes, so, um, like Kevin said, it's not been closed, we're not reopening, but we're still gonna check all these things. So, um, you know, the prohibiting parties, groups of ten are, uh, fewer people that are arriving together. Um, that's something we'll want to keep an eye on, continue to keep an eye on. Um, reinforcing the importance of maintaining distancing. The, uh, playgrounds and sports cart, sports courts are remaining closed and that there's no change here at this point. Although at the time when, um, we are able to, to start and begin to use the playground, again, we have some disinfectant that we are going to be using on the playground equipment. Uh, prohibit contact sports, thoroughly clean restroom facilities at least twice daily. Uh, currently our restrooms are closed, I think everyone's aware of that. Uh, we had cleaned them once daily previously, so as we're considering when we will reopen our restrooms, we are, um, also gonna make sure that we're cleaning them twice a day, not once a day, and again, using the disinfectant to clean the restrooms as well. Uh, we already disinfected, it's a, it's a additional disinfection that we're gonna do. Um, there may be some additional finders that we, that we will post at the park as well. So, thank you. That's it for this slide.
So that is the, uh, the items there. So we actually have been working on a citywide COVID, so these things came out on May seventh. So, um, we had already been working on some things and one of them is, is COVID nineteen, uh, policy for viruses presenting similar, and viruses presenting similar risks. Uh, been working on this for about three weeks now and actually had it finalized, just did a little bit of minor modification after they came out with, um, the most recent stuff on the state. So I was glad to see that the state pretty much followed what we'd already put into our policy, um, on it. But I just want to make you aware of a couple of things, get your feedback if you're comfortable with us putting this in place. So this would be to establish, I sent you a copy of this earlier, um, to look at. Uh, so this would be a work environment meeting, state and federal guidelines ensure the protection of our employees and citizens from COVID nineteen or viruses presenting similar risks in the future. So the prompt identification isolation is important. Employees increase the self-monitor for, uh, signs and symptoms of COVID nineteen if they suspect a exposure. They have a link here where you can go to the self-checker on there. If employer visitors seem to be potentially infectious and instruct them to move away from, uh, workers, customers, and our visitors. Um, we move, isolate them into an area, if they can leave and just go home, that's great if they need to wait, you know, move into an area where we can isolate them. Uh, take steps to limit spread of respiratory secretions of persons who may have COVID. Uh, social distancing, provide a face mask if fee- if feasible, um, ask them to wear it. And then follow, if we have anyone diagnosed or others, we'll follow state and federal, uh, leave requirements, because they have put some additional leave requirements in for us. For those that have been exposed and/or dealing with, with it. Uh, additionally, CDC's identified federal state and local government operations is critical infrastructure and sets the guidelines from CDC outlining guidance for implementing safety practices for critical emphasis to workers who may have. Had a person with suspected or confirmed, let's minimum be followed and then we've, we've got that. So this is the link to that on, on how we would handle, um, there at the top of the page would be that link. So each of these blue here are links to portions on either CDC or another website. So you can see employers, interns, contractors that have symptoms identified with CDC should notify supervisor, stay home. We have a subsequent diagnosis with COVID nineteen, uh, determined, notify their supervisor. Uh, so this is one I want you to be, be aware of and get your feedback on. But council members, committee and commission members who have symptoms as identified with CDC, once, if we were to reopen, should stay home to avoid placing others at risk. Um, I don't know that we're gonna be real, able to reopen under phase one and we'll show you a photo Y here in a little bit. Um, sick employees and those reporting city functions to follow CDC recommended steps. Um, and those are, again, links to those employees that are, and those involved, city means should not return to work until criteria discontinuing home isolation is met. Uh, employees, interns, contractors, council, committee and commission members who are well but have sick family member at home with COVID should notify their supervisor. Um, and follow CDC recommended precautions is what we would do in those cases. Uh, we're gonna take steps as flexible work sites, so tell community what we already have been doing. Uh, maintain regular hand washing, follow CDC guidelines or using alcohol-based rubs and rubs. Workers should always wash hands and, when they are visibly soiled after removing PPE gloves, face mags, or face shields. Uh, again, hand washing after touching common surfaces prior to touching face, eating, yawning, or coughing. Uh, maintain respiratory etiquette, including covering coughs, sneezes, ensure availability of tissue. Uh, again, hand sanitizing after covering, uh, cough or sneeze or use of tissue. Ensure customers and public have access to tissues and receptacles with closable lids, we'll be looking at that. Uh, and continue to maintain COVID information from employees and citizens on our websites. Some workplace controls. Actions we're taking, so we have ordered cloth-based masks, as all of you are aware of already. Uh, working, those outdoors have a lower risk of exposure of maintaining social distancing, in most cases will not require mandated use of a cloth mask. Um, but the mask may be used by employee discretion in any setting, indoor or outdoor unless required otherwise by federal, state, or local health authority. Um, at no time shall use of mask be a replacement for social distancing, as long as that remains in effect. So we have ordered some disposable masks for, for those that may come in and also in talking, um, probably for Sean and Dustin just because of the, the type of work that they're in and stuff. Rather than using cloth and, and the amount of soil that they probably would be getting with those. So we're also, um, if council approves tonight, one of the things we would like to get approval for, so we looked at our, one of the things that, uh, OSHA has provided guidance and that, um, we looked at, and one of the guidance things is to look at our air changes, ventilation rates of the work environment. Um, and looking at considering additional filtration. So we have five units, um, HVAC units here at city hall. They all have minimal, um, filtration, they're a one-inch filter. And as our HB, HVAC contractor said, essentially captures nothing smaller than, yeah, anything that we'd be concerned with is passing right through. So we asked, uh, we took a look, um, we do have the ability to turn our fans on, which we're doing, putting them in the on mode. Uh, but we have asked for a quote to upgrade and I'll share that here in a little bit. Um, we have a quote for upgrading and going to H, um, to HEPA filters with a UV light, uh, disinfector in line with it as well. And, um, to do that, and one of the things that we realized, um, you know, this is something that, in hindsight, it'd be nice to redesign, but it's not gonna be real easy. Our air intake for the council chambers is directly, um, is at the floor level, coming up to about three feet, I guess, um, on either side of the mural. It's in there, the carving. So during the council meeting, we're drawing everything right past us at the bias. So I think it's even probably more important to look at, uh, doing some things that we can reduce. You know, we may have someone in there that's, that's infectious, but rather than adding to it every time we have an air exchange, at least we're filtering and minimizing them, the amount. Um, on it, so we're looking at, at that, um, and we'll talk a little bit more here in a few minutes on that. Um, employees should avoid using other workers' phones, office desk tools, uh, common equipment, uh, needs to be wiped down. Hands washing signs will be posted in the restrooms, maintain regular housekeeping practices using, uh, and something that's effective for, um, COVID. Um, and, uh, maintain appropriate PPE and contact time. Looking at our, uh, outer areas as a transfer area with cleaning disinfectants required while the lobby is closed. Um, we're looking at installing, uh, actually, we're looking, said, we initially said plexiglass, been talking with, um, contractors, I think we're, we're gonna propose glass now. Um, plexiglass is hard to find and it, uh, scratches very easily and doesn't look good after a while, and we may have this, need to have this up. The other thing we're looking at also, um, just today, we've asked both the contractors, given us quotes. Uh, taking one of the windows in the front office area and, um, redoing it so we can have a slide open. We're using one of our awning windows that opens now, but actually putting some in and doing some, uh, modifications where we can allow people to walk up from the exterior to, um, have contact with us versus coming inside if they prefer. Um, once a decision is made to reopen, see how appropriate social distancing measure are required and if COVID, uh, directed shall be maintained. We had also. measures are required, and if COVID directed shall be maintained. We had also here a couple weeks ago ordered touchless thermometers, or most thermometers for checking employee in public temperatures. That's likely something that they may want to ask, it's something that for for gatherings on it. So, we have those, and we ordered those a couple of weeks, about three weeks ago. They're supposed, they were set to be shipped, if I remember correctly, on May 15. Following, so, and then you can see what we just have here on PPE on there. So, OSHA has, federal OSHA has identified four exposure risk levels. We could probably technically meet the lower risk exposure, but due to ongoing community transmission, limited contact with the general public upon reopening, we are recommending and electing to apply the medium risk exposure controls. So, on there. So, looking at, again, the sneeze guards, the front counter, restrict access to only those wearing, covering if required by local or health departments. Contact employees, interns, council, planning measures, provide them with a reusable cloth or disposable mask. Again, they're not a substitute for replacement of an OSHA-certified mask, nor a means of disregarding social distancing, and they would be made available. And then there's some stuff, and then disposable gloves, which we have here, and if required, we may be doing temperature checks and things, and then just directions for our staff that aren't used to wearing gloves when they do have them on, how to properly remove them. So, just wanted to give you an overview of that and see if councils, because there are some things that will apply to council and commission more on, you know, coming in, not so much and and the cloth mask. Any questions on this policy or comments?
Apparently not.
I have a comment. Definitely a pretty thorough there, Kevin. Appreciate that and all the work going into that. And, you know, I definitely want to support the, you know, safety and health of our employees as well as our community members coming in and interacting with our staff and in City Hall. Yeah, so, just a once glance through it with what you just covered, I wasn't able to go through it earlier when it came out, so I'd need to look at it again. But from what I'm hearing, it seems like a lot of appropriate measures, similar measures that many other agencies and cities are are taking, and maybe in some cases, maybe a little bit more aggressive, which, you know, I'm not necessarily against. I think it's healthy to really make sure that, you know, that staff's feeling comfortable, and I'm sure you've been in good conversations with all the staff and trying to develop this to work with them. So, it seems seems like a lot of good stuff. The initial stuff that you talked about with the PPE and then barriers seem to be appropriate, just off the cuff and listening to this presentation so far.
So, one of the things that, and you are right, Scott, we're probably taking things a little bit further. And one of the reasons is because we have such a small staff, one exposure could take out half of us. So, we're trying to minimize on there so that with us being an essential, you know, we can cut back, you know, how long we have to self-isolate and stuff, but on there. So, that's one of the things. So, as we mentioned, some of the things that we are looking at, some of the modifications. So, the first one is glass barrier for the front counter. We're waiting for those to come in. We've had had two. It sounds like that that's probably something that we're probably going to need to have up for some time. So, we initially were looking at plexiglass, but talking with vendors and stuff, it just really doesn't. So, we're waiting for that. We initially are asking for plexiglass. We're also hearing the glass is actually cheaper right now, but we're essentially looking at putting a glass along our front counter area, wrapping around, be about six inches off so we can still get plans, you know, open plans and go over things. And about 36 total heights, we'd have a glass panel, it's about 30 inches if you had, and I think, do you have that photo?
I was just trying to pull up, but I-
We had a photo of something similar to this they did at the county to show you at the tax area on it.
I'll try to keep.
We also, as I mentioned, is looking at taking one of the glass out of one of our solid windows and coming in, putting a new, so we can allow for a walk-up slide window where we can share stuff back and forth. We did get from our heating, so we have Linux furnaces in here currently, and our contractor is Mike Heating and Air. We asked them for a quote for a unit. So, essentially, we would need five units, but it's a Linux Healthy Climate Pure Air purification system. So, it's essentially a 16 MERV, if I remember correctly, HEPA filter, a four-inch HEPA filter going in. This is the, similar to what you would, we would be looking at doing with here at City Hall, except you wouldn't see any breaks between the glass like there. We would have it solid, if you can see what we've we've got up there on it. The total price, though, for the, there are some electrical and other things that they would need to do and modifications of the plenums where they, this would go in because it's a larger unit. But for all five units, we got a quote for $8,477, which I was really, I figured it might be twice that on it. So, on there. And I think we may be around $2,000, $2,500 for the front counter and the walk-up window. We are looking at some additional signage, more of a permanent basis signage, some things that we can put on the floor for people to stand that looks, you know, rather than putting tape, because I think it's going to be something we're maintaining for a while. You know, some things we can set outside, because we have to have signage outside before people come in, and showing them how we want them to to route through. As I mentioned, we're looking at, we're face masks. We already ordered, we ordered 250 disposable masks. They're supposed to be shipped here fairly shortly, and if we get that, we are probably going to be looking at additional face masks. So, we do not have the, we have funding available in our budget. We came in about $25,000 under in the capital that we planned for the City Hall upgrades, the City Hall, and we have a number of items in our current budget in where we have the funding available to put these items in. If council is agreeable to us, looking at those upgrades for the filtration and the the window and the glass sneeze guards in in the front on that. So, with that, I would, I would appreciate some direction from council if you're comfortable with us moving forward on those modifications to the building, and and if agreement for the policy.
So, you're right.
I got a question, or did I cut in, Mayor?
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. The the glass, the sneeze guard, or whatever we're calling it, is that, is that going to be a permanent, like fixture? What's your thinking for long term on that?
Well, what we're hearing is what they're recommending, that it stay up, you know, it could be at least probably a year. I think it'll give us a good opportunity to see how it works. We may may leave it, but it is something we can take off if we need to later, and we just have to redo our our countertop. That wouldn't be that difficult to do. It would provide some additional-
Security.
-safety to to those that are working here, because often that we have just a single person that may be in the office. So, that would provide an additional barrier to someone, you know, some additional protection for them as well. So, I think it can become, unfortunately, become more of a norm.
Right. It definitely will change the look of the office, but that's what I was wondering. It's like, and I was thinking the security, it's something that we've talked about before, or some kind of, you know, barrier type. But, yeah. And then the, and then the other one was the HVAC, the upgrade. It, what's the, so they, so you said $8,400 for upgrade of the five units, and-
Yeah.
And then what's like the continued maintenance? What did they say about continued maintenance fees, or, you know, what what's that look like? Do we know?
Well, the only, the only thing that we'd be changing is probably, right now, we have the filters, because essentially what we have for filters are not a filter. So, they only are changed every six months. I would imagine when we go to this, we may look at going to quarterly for the filter changes on it. But, you know, it's not, that's a, not a huge, huge cost. I've got HEPA filters at my house, and I can, you know, on the case price, it's not that expensive. There's not a lot from what I could see regarding the UV portion. It's a UV light and catalyst. You know, at some point, it may have to have a, have bulbs replaced in them or something on it. But, the filters are a 16-inch, a 16 MERV with activated carbon. So, they'll catch contaminants down to with, combined with the ultra UV light down to .01 micron, which is below what we are seeing for COVID.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not too familiar. I'm looking right now on my, on looking at that, the MERV and the versus the HEPA, and the HEPA, and and then, you know, yeah.
So, you're looking for approval to move forward, something between $11,000 and $15,000 total expenditure, correct?
Yeah, and there is one other thing that we didn't get on there that we had discussions on to today. We're also, as we mentioned, we have bought a 55-gallon drum of a disinfectant that's at the, for using at the parks and here at City Hall if we have to. And they actually recommend using a fogger for for that, for in our bathrooms, and then for on our playground equipment. We have found one, they're hard to find right now. We found one that ships, it shipped around June.
Actually, we just went with the one that Sean found for around $300.
Yeah.
It's going to be here in mid-June.
Yeah, so we purchased one. It's electric, supposed to be here mid-June. So, it's electric. So, rather than pulling a cord, we'll probably look at picking up a small hundred watt generator that they can take and move around. So, if they need to get out and start doing playground equipment and stuff like that, and the and the other things on it.
So, is that an airclave type deal you got? Wait a minute. Oh, I'm on, yeah. Kevin, is that like an-
Yeah, you're on. You're breaking up, Scott. I couldn't hear what you said.
My question is, is that a, is that like an airclave cleaning system with a wand?
It's, it's, I don't remember if this one has a wand. It's handheld, that they can, you know, use like a wand, but it's handheld, yes.
Have, is the city eligible?
We use it in the bathroom.
Okay. Is the city eligible for any kind of grants?
I don't know that any of, I don't know if any of this will be, you know, when you look at where we are compared to most cities and expenditures, we're tracking all the stuff that we're purchasing so that if we are eligible for reimbursement, that we can put in for it. But I I can't answer that question right now. That's still an unknown.
Yeah, I just know that there is some grants out there, but that's for, it seems like for emergency services, though we we contract with that. So, yeah, I don't think we would probably fall into the eligibility. I don't know. I just know that that-
We, we have been, yeah. But one of the things that we have been tracking since, since, as soon as they made the declaration, we instructed staff to count time for those things that they're doing extra that are related to this emergency. So, if they're spending extra time cleaning, or when we're doing stuff on research, or ordering supplies, or things like that, we're tracking that, those that, those costs and time.
Okay, are we ready to, can we pull this together then? Kevin, you're requesting approval to spend money to move forward as you've recommended, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that number is something, you know, just a filter and the counter is like $11,000, and then you probably have other money for the other items as well as the sticker, the signage, the face masks, and so forth, so.
Yeah, we don't know the actual cost. I just wanted to get more of if the council is comfortable with us moving, moving forward. We have room in the budget right now, as I mentioned, too, on it. I would say, you know, by the time, you know, for probably a safe number, I don't think we would be over 16 for the things that we're we're looking at, but somewhere there.
So, basically, you have the money in the budget, you have the ability, you have the authority to spend it. You're really just looking for awareness and acknowledgement in case we had any concern, is that correct?
Yes.
So, does council have any issues or concerns with what he has in mind?
I don't have any issues with it. I think we need to get moving on it.
Good.
I, if I could jump in again about the window, the exterior window, I don't know. I guess that's the only thing that I heard that sort of got me, not, I'm not really sure if that, how that's going to flow. I mean, I guess with the, in the interior part, with, if we go with the the sneeze guards or the glass inside, seems like maybe the window, exterior window would probably not really get used, is what I'm thinking, but it's probably not really that high of a cost item. So, I don't know. I I guess I'd be curious what the other council members are, but on it. But, yeah, so far, I'm thinking we need to do that, do some measures to make sure that staff's safe and comfortable with what's going on.
You know, we have, we have a drive-up window at our work, and it's allowed us to continue to service our customers quite well. You know, basically, everything we can do is is over the internet if we had the people that could do it, but some of the public can't do it. So, it's allowed to interact with our customers well. So, I I support it if if they need it. I think it's a minimal cost.
Sounds good to me.
I would say the same thing. I think the the window or the glass barrier is probably the most important part because of what I've read, it says that's how it's transmitted through droplets and all that stuff. The air, I don't, seems to me like that's pretty muddy on what people, what experts agree on, whether it's actually transmitted through the air. It can be in the air, but they still say they don't know if it can transmit through the air. But, again, the the glass, that's, there, I don't know many public places that aren't putting the glass up and the sneeze guards.
Well, one of the things, and the biggest reason for the HVAC modifications, the CDC did put that out to increase and look at your filtration systems in your in your buildings to limit exposure. And since OSHA put it out in the guidance, it's unfortunately, it's one of those things that if we don't take, look at doing something, if we were to have something, it's an item that gives them an opportunity to come in and find us for something potentially. Because it's specifically called out in OSHA's guidance to look at the air changes and filtration of your of your air on there. So, that's, that's one of the the main reasons, and to minimize risk.
So, add on the the walk-up window, the reason that ended up on the list is because we have a window that that opens a little bit right now, and staff have been using that regularly, especially with our county inspectors passing things in and out. But it's pretty inconvenient and hard to reach, and they've got to do some awkward things to make it work. So, this would, it's been, the concept is working well. It would just be better if they had a better opening.
And even once we open our lobby, we may have seniors, we have a lot of seniors that like to come by and then pay in person and stuff, and they may be more comfortable coming to the window, staying on the exterior than coming interior as well. So, that was part of the reasoning for that.
Yeah, I think it's great, Kevin. I see, I see that we moved forward on it, especially since, you know, our population tends to be either younger or older. So, so I think it's a great, great thing for us to do.
Okay. I think we've heard from everybody. Unless we're going to have any other comments, just move forward.
I'll, go ahead.
Well, I was, I was going to say thank you, Kevin, for for doing all the research on this and putting this together, too. Very, very thorough, thorough job. Thank you.
Thank you. So, one, one other quick thing that I did want to, we wanted to just share with you. If Phase 1, Phase 1 may allow opening for not more than 25, but we would have to maintain six feet. So, Danelle and I set up the council chambers, kind of give you an idea of what six feet spacing would mean at the dais. So, as you can see in this photo, we could get- So as you can see in this photo, we could get five people at the dais. So we would still need to locate myself, Janelle, Forrest and Kevin. Trying to maintain, so we would have for those, for, for us and maintaining the six feet, looking at the, our other area and still having travel where people can move without being within six feet, we would be able to put 12 seats out in our current gallery. And four of those would need to be staffed, so we'd only have eight seats available for the public. And it wouldn't be the easiest because we'd have to look at how we're going to get connections to, and how we would be recorded and stuff. So right now, after Janelle and I looked at it, our recommendation would be, even if we can get to the 25, our recommendation would probably be to strongly consider staying virtual just because of the limitations we have in the, in our meeting space. So we just wanted to give that to you for, for thought, we don't need to take action on it tonight, but just want to make you aware of that.
Planning commission.
Yeah.
Planning commission, I don't see how we could do planning commission.
The downside is all the hearings we have coming up that we need to do are going to be very difficult to do virtually effectively.
Well, you can do them virtually or you could hope, we could hold them out at the park, I guess, underneath the shelter would be an option.
Well, couldn't we just really close it to the public so it's only us in there and then you could stream it virtually?
We, we could, but as I, as you can see here, we would have to look at some things to, to get so that we have access. You know, we just have to look at how we're going to get access for when we're sharing stuff on the screen and make sure that where we're situated, you can pick us up for recording and stuff. On it, that's, that's the biggest challenge. We could, we could figure it out.
That's phase one, correct, Kevin, that you're talking about here? And then phase two would be able to have more people, correct?
Yes, so once, I, I think if they look at, I don't know if they're gonna, yeah, the question is that I, that's unknown, is, is the six feet spacing going to remain throughout all of it? They just say that you can have more in, you know, you may have a larger area where you can bring people, you can have a larger gathering, but you still, if you still have to maintain the six feet. Six feet is what's really creating the damper for us here. On it.
All right, that's, we need to continue to work that issue. I, and I, Kevin, you're right, I know exactly, I know what you're saying is actually accurate and needed and so forth, but I, Matt, I'm concerned about not getting adequate opportunity for our community to communicate with us. And I, a lot of folks probably aren't used to virtual meetings and so forth. So I'll continue to think about that and try to come up with some ideas, I don't know. It's frustrating, but it's the way it is. All right, anything else on this topic?
Janelle was just going to give you a quick update on the park.
I think, I think we already covered all of this, actually. If the last item on this list is, we are, we did get close for coating the restrooms inside and we're planning to do that in the next, in the next budget. It at least gives the appearance of more cleanliness, even if we're cleaning them right now, they don't look very clean. So it was just something we want to consider as we're reopening the restrooms, but the rest of that we already covered.
Yeah, we talked about the coating, we should do that, get it done.
Okay, I will look at what we have in the budget right now and the quote that we got and see if it's something we can, can do before the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, and one final, final thing that we talked about, I think at the planning or the budget hearing is, or committee meeting, is that we are not having our celebration this year due to the pandemic and given the states or the governors ruling around no major events through the month of September. So we're putting it on the shelf till next year. Right.
You need a motion, is that correct, then?
He doesn't need a motion, no. He's, it's just within his power to do this, he just, and with the budget and with his authority level, he just wants us to be aware of what he wants to do in case we had any concerns about it.
Got that.
All right, very good. Project updates.
All right, so there are a few things on the project update list I want to go over, and we don't need formal action on these, but I do need some indication of how you want to go forward. So the first is our David Evans contract amendment, we've got two contract amendments to talk about. So this is, to refresh everyone's memory, it's our ongoing contract for construction inspection services. We do expect it to decrease significantly in the next fiscal year. Our current subdivision under construction is getting close to wrapping up and they'll be done before, before we get too far into the summer. So we're decreasing the amount and, and this is all included in the budget for that, but we are adding owner's rep services for the fire station project. And this is Jeff Woodward's time, he's, he's been our construction inspector and he's, he's been helping us along the way with the selection of the consultants and, and he will help us through the project as he did for Albany on Station 11 and Police Station recently. So the total contract amendment amount is going to be approximately $70,000. They need to finish running it through their numbers on their site and send us back the final, to cover both of those things. So this, this contract amendment could be awarded by the city manager. In the past, we've brought these to council for final approval. So wanted to ask, would you, are you comfortable with Kevin signing this contract amendment as long as it stays within this, this realm and it is budgeted for next year? Or would you like it formally brought back to you at the June council meeting to consider awarding?
Council? Concerns?
Good with it, moving forward with the plan and as shown here on the minutes of the agenda.
Yeah, I would second, second that.
And send the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good, I'm good with it.
Good to go.
Right, thanks. The next item is very similar, it's for Jacob's on-call contract, continuation of our engineering support. It provides support for ongoing projects and engineering needs as they come up. A couple of projects that are in the works right now, the Woods Road project aired the design, they did the design and they're, will be supporting us through construction. We're testing again and not to exceed amount for the next year's amendment of $100,000, which is what it's been the last couple of years, and it is in the budget. So same question, are you comfortable with us moving forward with this as well?
I'm good with it.
Yep.
All right, system development charges. So we don't need to spend a lot of time going through numbers on this, I'll show you a little bit, but wanted to go over this and let you know that we want to schedule a work session for later this month to review this in detail. So draft methodology was posted to the website, made available to the public on the timeline that we originally showed you. Since the draft was posted, the document's been formatted more and then the project listing calculations were refined, which did result in some changes. So. So these are the current numbers that are the, that will be going over on the 26th. The transportation and sewer, I should think several of them went up a little bit. Transportation is significantly higher than it is right now. These are, these are, per the calculations, what the maximum allowed SDC would be. And council would have the ability to adopt a lower number if you are interested in doing so. But again, we can go into that at the work session, just wanted you to have a preview. We did think it was maybe relevant to compare our total SDC charges to other communities, as you see in the table on the right, and also as a percent of median, median home cost. So when you look at the percent of, of our home costs, we're actually lower than everyone except for sweet home, even with these increased amounts. Just wanted to give you a preview, are there any questions or anything before? I guess if you have questions, we can talk about them now or you can send them to me ahead of the work session if there are particular pieces of information that you're going to be interested in after looking over the methodology.
Hey, Janelle, Scott here, the median house cost, not familiar really with that, but I see at the bottom there, there's a link. Does that, would that explain that more so than?
Yeah, you could go to that link and that was included in your packet. So if you wanted to go there, you basically can choose your community and, and find what the median home cost is for any community.
I just see what, our flow, other than like sweet home is like, yeah. But, but then our total SDCs is, you know, fair, pretty, pretty much up there is the highest, one of the higher ones, of course.
It's pretty, pretty close to Salem.
Yeah, I guess Salem, yeah.
So one of the things, when we first presented, one of the things to keep in mind, we are the only city probably on that list that has pretty much exclusively 10,000 square foot lots. So keep in mind that everyone else has, you know, 5,000, 6,500 square foot lots. So when you look at it from that standpoint, that's one of the reasons why you see our median home price is much higher. I mean, we, we actually topped Carvalis for median home price. I think if you look at the type of home you're getting here compared to what you would pay for that same price in Carvalis, you have a much, a much larger lot and a much larger home comparatively than if you were to look at a lot of the other communities as well, so.
Hey, you got, we have the highest home cost and the second lowest SDC, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can go into more of the numbers on how, the projects that went into these numbers, because that's, that's how we come up with the, you know, these, these numbers, is what projects are we using? They come out of our master plans. But if you feel that there are pieces that we should exclude or look at to affect the numbers, we can certainly do that. All right, so if you have any requests, send them to me. Maybe at least a week ahead of the 26th, so we can make sure to get those materials into and ready to, to show you at that work session.
Yeah, I think, so was she going to be able to have at least a preliminary for the parks by that work, work session? So we could, could throw that in there?
No, because we actually haven't contracted with her to do parks yet. That was, that was excluded from the contract initially. And we, we can do that, we can start that anytime now, but because of the focus on getting through this process, we can't, we can't throw parks in at this point because it has to start back at the 90 days notice and, you know, parks was not a part of this when we started the public process. So the parks will have to be done on a different schedule. Could we get an idea of what that number might be? We might be able to do that.
Yeah, that's what I'd be after, because I mean, last thing in mind is, you know, that comes up significantly higher, throws these, these, these numbers way out there, so. But as far as, you know, as far as where's, at least so far without parks on there, as far as where our numbers are, doesn't really concern me. And the thing we have to remember is everybody updates these. So, you know, next year or two years from now, you know, Lebanon might go back and re-update their SDCs and then, and then they're, they're higher than, than us. So it's kind of a, kind of a moving target, so I think we're good as, as far as that part goes, so.
And you can probably assume that at least some of these, Albany, I believe, does, would do an annual percentage increase anyway and we're not seeing that because these are 2019 numbers. So by the time we adopt, it'll probably go up a little bit. Okay, all right. Then the next topic is similar, water and sewer rates, and I have no numbers to show you here, just the timeline. Because we put this on hold a couple of months ago and I wanted to put this new timeline in front of you, basically pushed it out a couple of months. And again, at that May 26th work session, we will give you information on the finalized rate structure and then move it moving forward. The one thing that was, we spent some time talking about is how we might do an open house and the timing for that. And it's still somewhat up in the air, we've left it as late July slash early August because we may want to schedule some other things, but we will settle on a date and how we'll address that at some point pretty soon.
And as I mentioned, Mayor, one option, you know, if we're limited to what we can do here in City Hall, it, maybe it's an open house at, at parks underneath the shelter.
Yeah, we still got the, let's talk, let's talk about it because you still have the same issue. Especially if you want to focus on a document or a chart or something. Yeah, let's talk.
We are looking at the ways we can put all this on the website, including a rate calculator and some things like that. But it is hard to not be in person.
We're getting me to roll, let's talk some more about how logistics and how we would do that with, with, with visual, visual aids and so forth and the lighting and sound and seating and. But yeah, that's, that's what it boils down to, let's do it.
Well, yeah, or it could be virtual. The dates to keep in mind here are we want the rate structure changes to become effective late this year or early 2021. We don't want to miss that window because right now we're still on track with how the whole thing lays out. And we want to make sure our utility billing system is in place. But we could push, we could even push these dates back a little bit, but we don't want to push back too far as long as you still want this to be like in the.
I like what you talked about, we, we got to keep this thing moving forward. I, I, you know, we, we put this out long enough that we definitely need to, uh, approach it forward.
I agree, I agree.
I, I, I agree too, so. The more we wait, the farther in the hole we, we go, so.
Right.
All right, quick update on the Parks Commission. We are accepting applications now, using the form and the questions that, that all of you discussed at the March council meeting. And we plan to have applications to present to you at the July 14th council meeting. And I've been trying to get the word out to those who are on the Parks Committee before and others who had been interested, but. And we put it out on Nextdoor and the website, but if there's, you know, any way to spread the word, that's great because we would really like to get some good applicants for you to consider. And one other thing I didn't put on a slide, just a very quick update on the fire station. We did have a kickoff for the design last Wednesday and we have a site visit at the, on the, at the site tomorrow with the architects and their civil engineers. We're starting surveying of the site, should be taking place in the next couple of weeks. So if you see folks out there, that's what they're doing. And then we're also working on filling out a questionnaire for getting the programming going. So things are moving forward on that.
Good, good. Anything else on?
May want to.
What's going on? You're going to review the brochure?
Would you like me to go over thing, anything in particular? It's, it's updated regularly and I know that text is very small for people to see.
No, I actually see it pretty well.
Okay.
Questions? Questions from council? You have East Carport Room Reorganization, what are the, what are accomplished, sir?
It, it's pretty much done, I just haven't checked it off the list yet.
I haven't been in there.
We haven't either for quite a while.
Okay, deputy still in there though, right?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on this? Are we ready to move on?
Yes.
Coming into City Attorney Report, which deals with the gas fuel tax resolution. Discussion only, but when I be making a decision on this tonight, Forrest has updated a draft based upon our last discussions. Forrest, do you want to talk about this at all?
Yeah, just real briefly, I have, I have prepared a draft resolution for you folks to consider. We have really until July, the July 14th meeting to make a decision if you want to accept this or not. Again, keeping in mind, using last, numbers from last year, 2019, about one quarter of the money or $100,000 roughly was raised, would be raised from gas and roughly $300,000 from diesel fuel sales. Again, though, this COVID thing, I don't know, that's certainly going to have a negative impact or the tax revenue will not be as high.
But if there's. There should be a negative impact on the shared revenue coming from ODOT as well.
It certainly may, it certainly may, so, so I just put everything in there. We are limited on certain, the amounts of words we can put in there. We are limited on certain, uh, the amounts of words we can put in there. If you guys have any suggestions and, oh, one thing that came up at a meeting we were at and I was able to verify with the Secretary of State is that if you folks decide to hold an open house, uh, you as elected officials can certainly advocate one way or the other. No doubt about it. And so the example, I spoke with Secretary of State's office on, all the way up through November 15th or November 3rd, you can do that. If you want to hold an open house though, prior to making the decision as to whether you want to go forward, you certainly may, but again, we've got these restrictions right now out there. But we can hold the open house at City Hall and you folks can get up there and, and field all types of questions and you folks can advocate one way or the other on that. Now, the city staff may not, and we have certain limitations on what we can do, who can show up there as city staff members, but you folks can have at it.
So the, okay. I was hoping to have all kinds of opportunity for discussions during this meeting and the June meeting and the July meeting, uh, to help provide opportunity for, for community input and to help influence our decision by July. I'm glad to hear you say that we can wait until July for that decision.
Well, and Mayor, just to bring that up, you can, yes, you can even move forward at the July meeting to, uh, pass the resolution. We can file it with the Elections Department and you have up until September 3rd to withdraw that if you wanted to.
Okay, okay. So I don't know that we could do any different with an open house than we can with a council meeting given the space issues in City Hall. So, I guess there's something else Kevin is in and out, and I could talk more about logistics. Also, if there are folks on, from the, from the public on this call, I see a, a name and a number I don't recognize. So if they would like to ask questions or provide feedback, we'll allow for that before we finish this topic. So feel free to prepare to do that. Any input from council on this draft?
I have one.
Yes.
Um, is there any particular reason why we're doing three cents instead of five?
That's entirely your call.
The three cent was mine. Uh, Albany tried a five, it got bombed big time. I thought five was getting greedy. However, it's open. I mean, you guys can talk about, I picked that because I thought it'd be easier one to swallow.
Well, yeah, I, I, I've kind of guessed that. Going through the list though, I saw that there's, there's several cities that have a gas tax and it's, it's five cents. I'm just wondering if this, if we're going to go after if it's easy. To me, it's, uh, this is an easier sell maybe for the Millersburg crowd, I would think. I'm, I'm a hundred percent behind it. Um, and I, I, five cents wouldn't, wouldn't, uh, wouldn't seem too much to me, but I, I think it, uh, it's one of the things where you go after one time probably, you don't want to go after it again.
No, that's true. However, I don't know, council, anybody else have thoughts around that?
I agree with Dave. I think this is a one-time shot. If you get three, you're going to be stuck with three forever. That's just my own opinion.
Did I send out a list to you folks? You have a list showing the three cent and five cent?
Yeah. Yes, we do.
Okay, good, because I have that. I can't recall whether I sent that out or not. Good.
There's a six center here.
Yeah, there is.
There's a 10 center.
Yes, 10 in Portland and six in Kohlberg, I believe it was. Uh, yeah, Kohlberg. Anyway.
There's lots of positives in this, in my mind, um, in Millersburg especially, uh, that I, I, I think it'll do well myself, but that's just, that's just me.
Yeah. So can we hold that thought until the next meeting? Kind of cheer on it and as a group, individually?
Yeah, that's fine. I would, I would second both of them. I'd, I'd, I'd go for the five. I think if they're going to approve three, they're, they're, they're going to a, a, approve five, so.
It is a one, probably a one-time shot, so.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, we don't want to have to go back and say we need more. Yeah.
I hear all four, I hear all four of you saying five cents. Okay. Go ahead and make the change.
At least, at least that's what I'm thinking right now. I mean, love to hear input from the community members, you know.
Yeah. I was pretty impressed with the total unanimous support from the Budget Committee. Um, Forrest, there's the last sentence on the Exhibit A I would recommend not having on there. I don't really, yeah, at least 26, it's actually 28 cities, but I don't know how the rest of you feel about it.
On Exhibit A, okay. You're saying which, the at least 26 cities have adopted, take that out?
We need that on the document, but I'm open, push, push back if you don't agree with me.
What are you saying, Mayor? Remove the, the line saying at least 26 cities?
Yeah, I just, I don't know what that does for us.
I, I mean, I'm assuming the only reason, it's there just saying that, hey, we're not trying something new. It's, it's something that's been.
No, it's actually, it's actually 28, it's actually 28 cities, none of which are Lynn County. Okay.
I.
I'm going to open it up for public comment or questions for those, there's two people I believe on here who I don't know from what I'm looking at. So if either you would like to speak, please unmute your phones or your microphones and speak up.
Hey Mayor, this is Jake Gabel.
Yeah, Jake.
Hey, can I just get my comment on this as like a citizen member, not a staff?
Certainly.
So I, I believe what was discussed during the Budget Committee was that this is a fuel tax, not a gasoline tax.
Correct.
I'm not opposed to a gasoline tax. I'm sure most of you guys know I drive an electric vehicle and I, I am opposed to the idea of electricity a tax or just a, a consumption fuel tax in certain. I think the way that the state and the federal government's all moving is pushing towards more renewables and I don't think the city should move towards, I know we don't have anything now, but discouraging charging stations by charging an additional tax to have been coming to the city. So I, that's just my, my personal opinion. I know I've spoken to several other people I know that own electric vehicles and they were all opposed to that same idea. I think the vast majority of the income on this is going to come from, um, like Loves and the traffic that goes through there and how much, uh, the, the semis and whatnot that come through. And I, I think I'm fine with that and the way it's going to go, but I don't think we should discourage renewable energies and, you know, improving air quality and all that kind of stuff that comes with, with electric vehicles and other, uh, more efficiency.
Jake, Jake, everything in there refers to gallon, gallons of fuel.
Okay. Because I know there was discussed and that's why it was changed to fuel instead of gasoline.
Well, you know, it's gallon, gallons of fuel.
Okay.
So may I interject on that? Right now in the state of Oregon, there is no, uh, city imposing a charge on electricity. The Department of Transportation or the ODOT is anticipating down the road, they may do that. The way they will do that is they will take a kilo, they will determine how many kilowatts per hour transition or transfers over to a gallon of gas and then would do it in that fashion. So a charging station, uh, in, at Loves or wherever that would be, that may happen. So if this is really on the table, you folks may want to decide if you want to explicitly exclude electricity. But once you exclude it, it may be excluded forever. You need to go back down the road and change it, you know, in 20 or 30 years when there may be more electrical vehicles out there. But I know that ODOT will eventually get into that.
Forrest?
Yes.
And also I, I believe that this would only apply to commercial. It wouldn't, so if someone has the charging capability at their home, they would not be charged based on that.
Correct, you're right.
So it'd only be at a commercial establishment where they would be charging a vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, thanks Jake. I see a Chris out there. Chrissy, I'm not sure who you are, do you like to speak to us? Anybody in the public arena want to speak to the council regarding this opportunity? Okay, hearing that, hearing none. Anything else? We'll have this on the agenda for another reading in, in June and again in July. Uh, we will still contemplate how we might get folks together for further discussions. Uh, that's all without take us just yet, but I have my weekly meeting with Kevin and Janelle in the mornings. We'll do a little brainstorming. If you have some ideas around that, let us know, how we might do a better job of engaging our public, not just for this particular issue, but a number of issues on our plate that we really need to get their input on. Appreciate that, okay.
So Mayor, do you want me, do you want me to change the three cent to five cent for the next version for you folks to look at?
Yes, please, yes, please.
Okay.
Yeah. Anybody have any other comments regarding that?
Oh, and did you want me to eliminate that sentence on Exhibit A?
Any comments from the rest of council about that?
That's about the 20, 26 other cities.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I, I'm good either, either, either way. I think it is nice to have it in there, just that we're not the only one, but.
Okay.
Especially since we don't have a city right around us that doesn't. We know it just came up in Albany, so, um, might be, might be good to throw that out there. If Albany had a tax or if they hadn't just gone out to vote on it, that's obviously, you know.
Okay, well, leave it there. The, the number though, Forrest, is 28 on the list you gave us.
Okay.
28 cities. Okay, leave it there, that's fine.
And I think at, at, at this point for us, I definitely leave it open for, um, electric vehicles. We can address that, down to that, uh, you know, as that comes in the future. We don't know how that's going to be, so we just can leave it open. It could be hydrogen cars that could come out. I mean, we're not, we're not, you know, what that is, so.
Yeah.
And they, they do use the road, so.
Will do. Thank you, council. I'll get those changes and get them sent, well, so they'll be in, in the June packet.
Thanks Forrest, anything else on this topic?
Yeah, a little bit, sorry. Yeah, the, just the, you know, I hear what, uh, Scott's saying about the, uh, you know, I guess I know it was talked about, just we don't want to make it too complicated or confusing. So I just want to reiterate that that was a conversation that, um, you know, you get into too much of the, you know, other energy sources that might muddy the waters. So we just want to be careful how we, how that is worded. But, you know, we don't know what the future is, so I don't want to see us to, um, you know, uh, our successors, uh, be kicking us for not having something or some way to, uh, continue, you know, so.
Because I think if we, if we take that out, Forrest, and let's say electric vehicles came along and we decided we did, you know, there was way too tax on them and we decided, you know, again, we're way out in the future. If that was the case, wouldn't we have to go back out to vote if we took that out?
Yes.
Yeah, so we might as well leave it in there because we just, we just don't know what the future brings. We're not taxing them and it has to come back to council in order to do that because we don't even know how we would do it. So that, that conversation piece would happen, but it wouldn't necessarily have to go back out to vote, so.
Well, so let me make, make sure, so if down the road, ODOT places a, a program in place to charge for electricity and they make the conversion kilowatt per hour over to a gallon, this and, and you're going out and you're purchasing that electrical charge, you would then pay a tax on it because that electricity would fall under this resolution, which is going to be passed. Okay?
All right, so it'd be an automatic thing or you'd have to come back to council still, right?
I don't think, I don't think, I think it would be automatic. I think that once it, once the conversion is done, this is, this is broad enough, this resolution is broad enough and, and you can see the, the question there is should Millersburg impose a three cent per gallon fuel tax to pay for city street maintenance? That is broad enough, three cent per gallon fuel tax arguably is broad enough to include that. Now, you could try to say eventually it's not, but I think ODOT will look at that and, and may, may interpret that as saying, yes, you can charge electricity.
So you're discounting everything I just told Jake?
So I just wanted to make sure it was clear because it, I know we didn't want to muddy it, but if I'm hearing you correct, Forrest, then by, um, by that basically first, uh, sentence of the Exhibit A, it, you're saying that you think it, it would include future, potential future, uh, other potential fuels if, if ODOT can convert whatever into a gallon formula?
I do, and, and this Exhibit A really isn't, doesn't say much really what you have in front of you where it says, we're a new draft fuel tax resolution and, and the question. So the question that we're going to be asking is basically this question that's in front of you and that's what the voters will need to vote yes or no on. And that three cent per gallon, when ODOT determines how much kilowatt hours converts over to a gallon of gas and you go someplace and get charged, I think ODOT is going to take a, um, take that tax at that time. Now, if you see, so if you did not want to do that, if you specifically wanted to exclude that, then you would, we can write that in there. I mean, we can, I could come up with some language to do that.
So I'll, I'd butt in here real quick. Um, so my, my, my two cents on that again is, uh, if we're looking to the future, um, there's already electrics and my trucks on the road, so being tested. Um, so if we're going to look way into the future, then, you know, what, what do we do with that? It's, I think we leave it all alone and then let, I don't think by any way is the city trying to say, hey, put electric at a disadvantage. Like Scott said, they still use the road. Um, if someone wants to, you know, use electric cars and that's the way we go, the merits alone that they stand on should, uh, you know, should push that. But I think we equally, it, it tax everything as it, as it comes along. I think if we start taking all that literature out, you know, getting back to muddying the waters, uh, yeah. What if a hydrogen car comes out, you know, what, what, I just say you leave the, the verbages as it is and then as, you know, things kind of grow and, and evolve, then that's how you, you tax them, just off the fuel that they consume.
Yeah, I agree. Um, you know, we're already running CNG garbage trucks, which is, you know, compressed natural gas. So who's to say they don't put a fueling station out here and we can't draw revenue off that?
Jake, are you still there? Jump back in here and give me, give us your thought, Jake.
So my other comment on this would be to help address your guys' concerns on the amount of tax going into it. I know Oregon, among other states, is also looking at this to make it fair, right? For we are, you know, electric vehicles are using the road. So the, the one solution I think that they're pushing forward on and have been working on for the last year, year and a half is increasing registration costs for electric vehicles and other alternative fuel that isn't covered under fuel taxes on a normal basis. So I know they were looking at increasing registration by at least three to four times what a typical gas car registration is. And that would be, I believe that falls under and goes into the highway use tax and other gas taxes that would fall, that would be covered under this, so. Um, I don't know how that revenue would then be passed on to cities or if it will.
Okay.
Well, understandably so. I think also no one has a gas station at their house.
So what I, what I hear the four of you saying is you want this to be able to be read in the future in such a way that it would adapt to whatever ODOT comes up with, with a transitional that passed.
Yes.
And that's your.
Correct.
Okay. Nothing from me.
Thanks Forrest.
Thank you, Mayor.
New business cost of living adjustment?
Yes, so, um, in, uh, this is requesting council input for the cost of living and wage increase for 2020 that would be effective July 1st. Council remembers correctly, a few years ago now, we adopted, uh, a benefits and compensation policy for staff excluding, uh, myself and Janelle. And we are presenting for council consideration of the annual wage adjustments based on that policy that council adopted, um, effective July 1st based on Consumer Price Index. So the part of that we stated, the council stated they, they would review the Consumer Price Index, CPIW. So part of that, we stated, the council stated they, they would review the Consumer Price Index, CPIW, for the period from January to January. So the period from January 2019 to January 2020 was identified in the policy. CPI for that period was 2.5%. Staff has included that in proposed increase in the budget that you considered, as we mentioned when we were going over, over that. However, council does have the option based on the policy to let them out lower or higher than the CPI at your discretion. So what we're looking for is, again, the budget impact that has been factored into our budget, with the exception of mine and Janelle's positions, that would be something you'll make a decision on what you would like to do in January. So we would just ask your consideration for adoption of a COLA for fiscal year 2021. And again, that can be, as based on what you asked us to follow, or you can modify that.
Good. Yeah, I'll motion that we adopt the current COLA as shown as 2.5 is based out of, wherever it was based out of, was Portland?
That's CPIW West Coast. So Portland no longer is, is done. So it's based off of the West Coast.
There is CPI West. Yeah. So based off CPI West was adopted 2.5.
Yeah.
Second. Give me a little reader back, please.
I was talking and I had my mic off. Okay, 2.5. Okay. All right, Scott, I'm going to give it a shot here. See how I did. Motion to adopt the current COLA as shown based out of the CPI West. And then, then the 2.5 proposed, and I'm not sure how you want to say that.
Is, is the 2.5, that's what's shown is the 2.5 is, is what is?
As the 2.5 proposed.
Yeah.
Correct? Okay. I got it. Never mind. Maybe motion to adopt the current COLA, the current two point, the proposed 2.5% COLA as shown based out of CPI West?
Correct.
Okay.
That was by? Who's, who made the second?
I did. Dave Harms.
Thank you, Dave.
All right. Thanks, Dave. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to bring it up because I think it's kind of, I think we just should at least bring it up. I was kind of waiting to see what everybody else said, but obviously everybody knows, you know, we have the economy going on the way that it is. You know, we have unemployment somewhere between 15 to 25 to 35%. We're not really even sure where it falls in that with these PPP loans going out. You know, there, there has been a retraction in the Consumer Price Index over the last two months up to a negative 1.3%. You know, obviously we, we definitely have, I'm sure homeowners in Millers, Millers, Millersburg struggling, not having their jobs at the, at the moment. We have ATI, which is our largest tax base in the city, just cut all of their salary positions 10 to 20% off their salary and cut their 401K contributions for the, all the way through 2022. So there's obviously some issues going there. And obviously we have businesses in, in, in town that are struggling too on top of that. We obviously, we have the city of Portland's furloughing workers. We have the Portland School District is trying to furlough teachers. I'm sure Albany is probably not too far behind trying to do something. Obviously they have unions involved in that. So I think it's, you know, at least, at least mention that with, with the current economic times going on with obviously giving raises. I personally, I feel that you always pay, pay, pay people and you pay people what they're worth and what you agreed to and you don't mess with, mess with wages. That being said, you know, is it okay for us as a city council, you know, is it, is it, is it responsible for us to, you know, in light of these things going on, in light of the fact that we're probably going to have, you know, some, some budget cuts to us, whether it's through ODOT, people not able to pay the property taxes. I mean, whatever it is, it's definitely going to affect us as a city. Is it responsible for us to give raises at this point? So that would be my, my concern. I guess that's more of a thought. I just want to throw it out there because of, of, of what's going on. So I'd be curious what anybody else thinks. So.
Uh, my answer to that would be kind of what you had said, Scott, is you pay people and what their performance is and what they deserve. The, this COVID situation that we're in, I mean, if I was to ask you or anybody else right now, no one knows when it's going to end. It could end in two months, could end in two years, but I think we would assess that next year on the cost of living adjustment, not this year.
Yeah, that sounds good. So just out of curiosity, if the cost of living goes negative, which, which let's face it, I mean, they'll do whatever they can to make sure that doesn't. But, but if it goes negative, do we actually minus, and this is more of a policy question, do we actually minus, minus off wages?
I think at some point you look at that, right?
Yeah.
I would say if you went minus wages.
Fifty percent of the premium, you have to.
I think you consider, you know, maybe not, you know, freezing, freezing the wage, but not minusing wages. I would have issues with that. But I think, I agree. I think we got to wait to see what, what, it's sort of a lot of unknowns at this point. This was already budgeted and planned at current with this budget. But, you know, like in January, we'll know in January, February, what people are doing with their, if they're paying, paying on property taxes and such. And, and that will be the, the tell of, of where we potentially might be financially as a city. Is where my head is on it for now. But I, yeah, it's definitely, it's happened before. Well, you know, that at least I can't say for Millersburg, but I know for me in Albany, things get tight. They, they just put a freeze and you don't go with the pay increase. You don't get COLA, you don't get anything for the year and you, you ride it out. There is, the problem with that is that you, you do that enough times, especially pay freezes and every, everything else is going on around you or whatever, you, you start losing traction with, with your comparability of, of, of positions and jobs at, at, at your city. And Millersburg would be in the same boat, but the likelihood, this is not just going to be isolated. This is maybe more global and that's where we'll have to look at that.
When I was on a school board many years ago, I was very sensitive to this very issue. While there's in a community that was much from very rich to very poor and almost overnight to do a couple of different items. And we had school staff pushing for higher and higher wages when they were being funded by income tax revenue. Okay. Which was going down. And I thought that was very insensitive. In our case, we're being paid for by property tax, not income tax, property tax and franchise fees. We should be sensitive for sure, but workload has actually increased, I believe during this timeframe. And I want to make sure we're caring for our, our employees, but still be sensitive. And as somebody else recommended earlier, I can keep an eye on it over the rest of the year and see what takes. For now, I support the motion.
Mayor, could I just add a little clarification on, on the CPI? So the CPIW is the, the updated version of the old CPI. So that's buying habits of urban wage earners and clerical workers versus the U, which is buying habits of all urban households. So the CPIW historically is a little bit, is usually lower in most cases than the CPIU. And then we are also using the US city average. So what we have available to us is US city average. Again, that's usually the lower of, of the ones. And there's the West, West Coast, which is Class B C, which is Western, including California, Oregon, Washington, Alaska and Hawaii. And then Pacific Class B C, excuse me, Pacific Class B C, which is California, Oregon, Washington, Alaska and Hawaii. And the West Coast Class B C, which is all cities with populations less than 2.5 million in 13 Western states. So the average that we're using on the CPI, and we take this off of LGEPI's website, which is subset of the league of Oregon cities. And there, that's where it's reported. So when we look at, at the January, the January. So if you look at US city average for January to January was 2.5 for US city average for 2020. And the Pacific sized Class B was 2.7. So we are on, on the low, but just, I just want to clarify, the CPIW itself does not mean West. We're going off the US city average, but it's for workers, for clerics, including the clerical. Just want to provide that clarification to you.
And I misspoke, but the example I gave earlier about schools, they are also funded through property tax. But in this case, major, major property tax went away such as a nuclear power plant. Guess what? Same thing happened in Millersburg when IP shut down. Property taxes went to the toilet. When those kinds of things occur, then we really need to be looking at the what, you know, what we're, what we're doing in terms of with our costs. Anyway, enough said. I just, I wanted to clarify that. I made a mistake.
I think it was well said, council, be taking note of that. So I, I agree. We just need to keep a pulse on it and, and keep track of it. I agree with what you're saying.
Perfect. I like it. I just wanted to bring that up just because in, in light of what's going on, at least we talked about it.
We follow this track of it. Absolutely agree.
I think it's, I think we're far from, I mean, again, I think you monitor it, but I think we're far from reason or even reduction in wages. And when you see, when you see the property value or the city's value go down by a significant amount, then I think we might have to worry. But like Kevin's saying, that, you know, they're busier than they are, less busy right now. So if that was a change a year from now, then maybe we take a peek at that.
Yeah.
All valid points. I, I would not be a proponent of rolling wages back. Just my own opinion.
Good discussion, guys. Appreciate it. All right. Are we ready? Are we ready for the vote?
Yep.
Yep.
Go over and click your yes or no button, please. Oh, mine's not working. There we go. All right. We have approval. You got that, Kim?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, guys. Moving on to stormwater intergovernmental agreement. Say that real fast.
All right. So we're requesting approval to sign a new IGA, the City of Albany, for stormwater collection system mapping on the city of Albany's GIS system and providing locating services. So a little bit of background, Kevin and I were talking about this today. I think we've been working on this for about a year and a half. And it's actually a very simple IGA, just to go out and get through. Albany is presenting this to their council shortly, if they have not already. I'm not sure exactly which meeting they were going to, but they let us know they were ready to move forward. So we brought it to you tonight. So what this is, this is all about is we have stormwater infrastructure in the city. And I mean, the stormwater master plan, it was all mapped and put into GIS. But we, Millersburg do not have a GIS system ourselves. Albany maintains our GIS data for water and sewer infrastructure. So we asked if they could include our stormwater. They also do our utility locates for us for water and sewer. So we asked if they could include our stormwater utility locates, which is important because at the moment, no one is doing stormwater utility locates in Millersburg, we have discovered. And it's run into a couple of conflicts. City of Albany staff also have requested that we get this information into their system because it helps them better know what's out there when they're doing water or sewer work. So that's why we're bringing this to you. So the agreement is for data only, really. There's no maintenance component to this like there is for our water and sewer IGA's. They will, we will send them the data on our lines. And we have, like I said, we have that all from the stormwater master plan initially. And then as subdivisions or developments complete, then we get additional data that they will import into the GIS system. And then it will be maintained. This IGA is for an initial 10-year period with automatic five-year succeeding renewals, subject to the terms of the IGA, just like our other water and wastewater ones. And we would be paying this quarterly, just like we do our others, based on time and materials. Mostly app time in this case, not so much materials. Questions on, on this or any of the terms in it? Oh, and there will be some costs upfront for importing that data in the first place, but they should be fairly minor because we asked our consultants who did the stormwater master plan to format all of that data so it can be imported directly into their system. So there would be some pretty minimal costs and those are already included in our stormwater budget for this year.
Janelle, will we, with a new webpage coming on board, will we ever be able to access GIS data for Millersburg via our own webpage?
We would be able to link to Albany's Info Hub site where they have our data, which any of us can access right now. We have not talked to our website about actually managing GIS data. I don't believe that is something that they do. It would be something we would have to do separately and then you could access it through the webpage, but a different type of program.
Well, you and Kevin use it more than anybody. So I guess the question, do you want to do that? Maybe you probably, you know, you're probably used to doing what you're doing currently.
Yeah, someday in the future, it might be beneficial for Millersburg to maintain our own data, but at this point, it's probably not effective to do that. And we utilize.
Okay. Well, I'm okay with this proposal.
Yeah, no, the GIS system is just awesome, especially the one that Albany has. It's just so user friendly and interactive. And I think this will save a lot of staff time too, because I know I, if I have a question, I just, I just pull up the GIS maps. So, so I'd say we absolutely do it.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. I'll motion that we authorize city manager to sign the IGA for maintenance of Millersburg's stormwater infrastructure data and stormwater location services.
Second.
Okay, Kim, I have another Scott and Scott motion. Can you read it back?
All right. I keep forgetting to press the button. Motion to authorize the city manager to sign the IGA for maintenance of Millersburg's stormwater infrastructure data and stormwater location services made by councillor Cowan, seconded by councillor McPhee.
Further discussion? Those in favor, click the button, please. You got him, Kim? Like unanimous, unanimous support.
Got it. Thank you.
Right. Very good. Okay, moving on to the last item, capital improvement program. Now, has this changed since our budget committee meeting, anyway?
The, no, the only thing that has changed are the minor edits that were discussed at the last budget meeting were incorporated.
Okay.
And Kim made a nice cover for it.
I noticed that. Can we just, to approve?
Good job, Kim.
Motion that we adopt of the 2020, 24 capital improvement program is shown.
Second.
Motion to adopt the 2020, 2024 capital improvements program made by councillor Scott Cowan. And was that councillor Harms that did the second?
It was.
Okay, thank you.
We did that fairly quickly. Kevin or Janelle, did you want to say any more about it?
No, the only thing that, that you recall that we did discuss, that next year, we're going to do this a little bit differently, that one of the things we discussed is we would do an earlier meeting with the council and budget committee, probably the end of March, in which we would review outside agencies and the CIP versus doing that. So do those things, those two items together prior to the official budget meetings taking place toward the end of April next year.
Agree.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah. Any, any further discussion before we go to the vote?
Yeah, one question, Kim. On the, on the front here, on the bottom of it with the pictures, there's a picture of like a water waterfall there. Is that, is that in Millers, Millersburg?
Yes, as well. It's in the Talking Water Gardens.
Oh, okay. All right. There we go.
It is in Millersburg.
Yeah.
Okay. I have, I have one question that's been popped in on my head the last couple of days for Janelle. Speaking of Talking Water Garden, the bridge, we own it, we own it. It's utilized by the railroad, utilized by Albany to a very, very large degree. Actually is obligated to pay for that replacement?
We are.
We are. It's, if you've been down there, you've noticed it was recently posted with a new load rating for the latest ODOT inspection. It is, it is something we will need to take care of in the future. We, after we didn't get the last grant, we decided we would wait to the next grant cycle opportunity and try again because it needs to be done, but it's not, it's not something that has to be done immediately.
Albany, share any, any requests for this?
Not, not from the. Not, not from the standpoint of officially being responsible. No, it is in our jurisdiction with our.
Yeah. Okay, very good.
Come with the grant though, and we probably didn't explore that with the, the, the grant that we attempted once, is if we can collaboratively work with Albany, Millersburg, as well as the railroad, um, it'll give us a lot more option, you know, more, a little bit more of a, uh, opportunity to receive that grant. That's definitely something that we'll want to utilize.
Yeah, we'll definitely, um, keep looking for grants that fit it and continue to work with those. I mean, Lynn County was very involved in the application. It, it depends on how they have allocated the money in that grant cycle and what the priority is. And I'm trying to remember what it was last time, but it was really focused on some specific things that our bridge just didn't rate as high in.
Traffic.
Yeah, one was traffic and access to like, there's no residential area that is the only way in and out with the park, you know, it's kind of treatment facility. So it's, we will leverage those relationships as much as we can, but in the case of the one we didn't get, it's also depends what the funding is designated for and how they score the, uh, grant applications.
How much, so it's for access to a treatment facility, correct? That's what I just heard Kevin say. Right?
Sorry, I didn't.
The, the bridge, the, who, the, it's access to a treatment facility instead of residential area?
It's access to talking water gardens, which is part of the, the treatment facility.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm, I know that, but and how, how much do we own of that, that, that uh, treatment facility?
10%.
How much does Albany own?
90%.
Are we 10% of the traffic?
Um, again, it's whose jurisdiction the bridge falls under and that is squarely Millersburg.
I know, just wanted to make your home. Sorry I brought it up.
Be important, Dave.
Okay. Any other, any other questions or, uh, comments regarding the CIP? Right now, let's go ahead and place your votes, please.
I see all five.
May I have you now? Let's vote again. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, closing public comments. We have members of public out there. You're sure welcome to speak up at this time. Ask questions or make comments. Unmute your mics or your phones and talk to us.
Everyone has been unmuted, mayor, so they should be able to speak if they wish.
Okay, very good. Closing council comments.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Uh, just wanted to let the council know that, uh, we, uh, had a kickoff meeting with our architects, Soderstrom, uh, architecturals, uh, regarding the, the future fire station, uh, just looking at, uh, different options and just really taking a global look at things. But we had our kickoff meeting. I thought it was a good meeting. Um, and, uh, as we move forward, um, I'm sure staff or myself will keep you appraised of what's going on. Got a good relationship with the, uh, fire chief over in Albany, uh, working with them. And, uh, hopefully we'll get some, you know, input from, from the, uh, the, uh, the firefighters, sort of some of their, their hopes and needs, but obviously it's going to be our fire station and, and we'll, uh, address the needs of our community as well with that, um, with pricing and everything. So anyways, I thought it was a good meeting on that. Um, any questions on that or? Second point was, uh, uh, just wanted to, uh, let staff know, appreciate the, uh, the, the excellent job on the COVID report policy. Uh, just again, reiterate that, um, I appreciate the, uh, keeping our, our staff safe as well as our community, uh, members coming in safe and, uh, keeping them safe. So, um, anyways, I just want to reiterate, it was, uh, it was good, good report and appreciate the effort. And a report from me.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for doing that, Scott. That's awesome. Thank you.
Like I, like I mentioned before, this is probably, I probably have it the easiest of any mayor around here as a result of the work our staff is doing. Uh, it's just totally awesome. This is pretty quiet time, but I say quiet from my perspective, they're doing a lot of work. Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, good job, guys. Always forward thinking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, coming down to the end. If I don't hear anything else, we're going to adjourn. Okay, we're gonna be done. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all and be safe.
You guys take care.
Night.
Night. Thank you.